Chair, I just want to tell that you know you could go by Ms. Sankar and set up the whole long. If it'll make it easier for you.
Whatever you prefer. It rolls off the tongue.
Go ahead with Ms. Sankar. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, good morning, everybody. In accordance with section forty-five and fifty-three, the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever properties to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on as a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewatah, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations and Ute Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as attendee. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, you will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, the video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen and any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person today who wish to receive a copy of the decision of the committee must fill out an application, or must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually will need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Alright, for the hearing procedure today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make presentation, a presentation to the committee on the application. Again, please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent may have the opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Alright, before we get to the first item, are there? We've got some minutes to adopt.
Through you, Mr. Chair, do you want to ask if there's any conflicts at this point, or do you want to?
Yeah, I, well, we should ask, are there any conflicts in the morning session? Let's get that out of the way. Staff, no conflicts? Alright, there are no conflicts, okay? We have some minutes to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have two sets of minutes to adopt this morning. The first one is from our January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting. Present was Ms. Cassin, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Fazeli, Mr. Kubu, and Ms. Sankar.
Alright, do we have a motion? Yes, Mr. Kubu?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I put forward a motion to adopt the minute as proposed.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Alright, that's Ms. Sankar, all is unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have a second set of minutes this morning to approve from our February sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Present was Mr. Allison, Mr. Mazzari, Mr. Bartolo, Mr. Niffeld, and Mr. Schwartz.
Alright, do I have a motion? Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Niffeld.
I'd like to move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, do I have a seconder? Yeah, seconded by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Alright, that is unanimous. Alright. Alright, I believe we have some deferral requests. Actually, before we get to that, there's some files that need to be closed.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, through you, there is one file to close. It's file number A zero five three one, twenty-four NY. The address is one seventy-seven Shepherd Avenue West.
Alright, do I have a motion? Yes, Ms. Sankar.
Yeah, a motion to close that file.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Niffeld, all in favor? Alright, unanimous. Okay, let's get to our deferrals. Item number one, Fifty-One Little Boulevard. We have our applicant or agent with us. The purpose of the application is to construct a garden suite by adding a two-story side addition, a second story over the existing garage. Variances for rear yard setback, north and south side yard setback, and soft yard landscaping. On file material from the applicant, email from Metrolinks, and one letter of objection from Fifty-Eight Ronald Avenue. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Morning, members of committee.
Good morning, I understand you're requesting deferral this morning.
Name and address, please, Mr. Chair.
Yes, before we do, your name and address, please?
Name is Mr. John Sasso of Humphreys Planning Group, Inc., agent representing the owner of the property located at Fifty-One Little Boulevard, the city of Toronto. We are requesting deferral.
Hold on, before we get to that, your address, please?
One ninety Pippin, P-I-P-P-I-N Road.
Okay, alright.
We are requesting a deferral this morning. The plan has been updated substantially, and there is a discrepancy between the proposed variance for landscape surface area, and it's my understanding that that variance will change as a result of the modifications to the plan. So we would want confirmation from the zoning examiner to confirm the nature and extent of that variance, and then proceed with the application once that has been done.
Okay, very well. I should note as well, I did not see the soft landscaping indicated on the site plan, so that you may want to consider having that updated before the next hearing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Niffeld, oh, did you?
No.
Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll put forward a motion to defer this application to allow the applicant to make their modifications and have subsequent zoning review.
Alright, very good, do I have a seconder? Yes, Mr. Niffeld, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous, deferral request is approved.
Thank you very much, members of committee, have a wonderful day.
Alright, let's jump to item number six, Twenty-Seven Yorkview Drive. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with integral garage, variances for north side yard setback, for rear deck, a north side yard setback for rear canopy, side main wall height, building length, building depth, driveway width, front yard landscaping, stair width, second story, variance for second story balcony, lot coverage, north side yard setback, and south side yard setback. On file material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, memo from urban forestry, multiple form letters of support from four, seven, eleven, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six, forty-two, Yorkview Drive, as well as letters of concern from nine, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, Yorkview Drive, sixty Claywood Road, and the Edith Vale Young Community Association. We have our agent with us?
Yes, good morning, it's Glenn Rubenoff from Rubenoff Design Group, to St. Fair Avenue West, Toronto.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rubenoff, welcome back. My understanding is you're asking for a deferral?
Yes, we've made significant changes to the plans. We've spoken with city planning, who, you know, we explained to them we'd like to defer, and they agreed with that, so we'd like to request deferral and come back with a modified application.
Alright, very good, we do have some other speakers we need to hear from. Alright, anybody here in person for this item? No? Okay, staff, we've got some speakers, let's get them on.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we've got needed Doug.
Hello?
Hello, this is Doug Wilson from Eighteen Yorkview Drive, and I would like, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Wilson, you're cut off there?
Yes, so am I to comment at this point in time?
Yes, just speaking to the request for deferral at this time.
Yeah, I would like the, the application canceled because of the amount of modifications that would need to be made and reaplication.
We're just speaking to the request for deferral at this time. Whether or not you're supportive of a request for deferral?
Uh, no. I would like to go ahead, because, yeah, I would like to go ahead. Because I don't think he's done a lot of direct neighbor consultation. So, let's go, let's move forward.
Alright, okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. We have some other speakers as well?
We've unmuted Stan, Mr. Chair?
Sholov from City five Yorkview Drive. I just don't want this referral to be just delayed in cancellation of this request because it just outrages task for so much for our area where we never had this side backs or building lands on our side of street. So I support the referral, but I hope that they will revisit whatever they asked for because this is too much.
Alright.
Breaking, bye, love, thank you.
Okay, so we've got, in support of the deferral, we have another neighbor?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi, my name is Wen Ling, I'm the resident of Twenty-Five Yorkview Drive. My wife here, we live here, and for the, we just built our house last year, and we all like follow the building code. We, with regard to the building lands, building depths.
Hold on, I'm gonna stop you there. We're just speaking to the request for deferral at this time, we're not getting into the merits of the application. So I'm gonna ask, sir, whether or not you're in support of the request for deferral?
I think they, they, they better to get a deferral and to change the plan, overall plan.
Alright, thank you very much, okay, thank you. We have another speaker as well? Ms. McConnell?
You can hear me okay?
We can hear you now, yes, your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Anne McConnell, Thirty-three Yorkview Drive. I'm two houses over from this property. I'm really reticent to support deferral. We have seen modified plans which retain the problematic, problematic, seriously problematic variances, and so we would prefer them to be heard today when the neighbors are here and prepared to speak to them.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, staff, any more speakers? No, okay, let's go back to Mr. Rubenoff. So, Mr. Rubenoff, I've heard there's two neighbors in support of the deferral, and two neighbors that are not in support of the deferral. I want to give you an opportunity to respond.
Sure, thank you. So there's further changes to what was submitted to the file, further reductions to the application, and that needs to be confirmed by city, by city staff, and also by city planning. So that's why we're requesting a deferral.
Okay, so just so I understand, some of those changes have not been shared with the public yet?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll also mention, regardless whether or not the applicant shares plans, if a request for deferral is granted and the item is heard at a future date, the updated drawings and application material will be provided on the city website for public review. Alright, let's take this matter into committee for decision. Yes, Mr. Niffeld?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I feel that since there have been revisions made, and one hopes that there are visions that the, that the public might find more agreeable than the current application, there's every, every reason to defer the application. So I'd like to move deferral to allow the application to be modified and the variances to be modified, and also to provide for consultation with the neighbors.
Alright, do I have a seconder? Yeah, seconded, Mr. Kubu? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, request for deferral is approved.
Thank you.
Alright, let's jump to item number ten, One eighteen Three Valleys Drive. The purpose of this application is to construct a front addition to the existing attached garage. Requires four variances, west side yard setback, lot coverage, front yard setback, and encroachment of a roof canopy. On file material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, memo from TRCA, and ravine natural forestry protection. We have our agent or applicant with us?
Yes, my name is Marcella Miranda, and our address is one six six zero Bayview Avenue in Toronto. We are requesting a referral because we didn't get, for whatever reason, we didn't get the signage and the affidavit on time to be, to be posted ten days as required by the guidelines. So that's the only reason for the referral, the feral.
Alright. I also note that there may be some modifications to the public notice?
Yeah, it was, but they're very minimal, like, they, there was, we, we went back from five point sixty to six on the front setback. They're all positive, and the other one was, we were at one fourteen on the side, and we went to one twenty.
Okay.
So they're, they're all like, mm-hmm.
Yeah, very good, no, no, I, I just note, if a deferral is granted, it may provide the opportunity for you to have the public hearing notice updated as well, just so we're dealing with less modifications on the floor. Alright, very good. Okay, I don't see any other speakers? Alright, let's take this matter into committee, yes, Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I'd like to put forward a motion to defer this application to allow the applicant to get the proper posting time for the public notices completed.
Alright, do I have a seconder? Yes, Ms. Sankar, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, request for deferral is granted.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let's get to the first item on, first item of the day, which is going to be item number two. Two hundred forty-three Bedford Park Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling. We've got five variances before us. North and south main wall heights, FSI lot coverage for an ancillary building, variance for parking space in the front yard, and a rear yard landscaping area. On file material from the applicant, community planning report, transportation memo, urban forestry memo, and one letter of objection from two forty-five Bedford Park. Alright, we have our agent with us?
Yes, sir, good morning, Mr. Chair, I'm a member of the committee. My name is Said Mahbubey, sixty seventy Bayview Avenue, Suite Zero.
Alright. Sir, we do have another speaker, so I'm gonna ask for a brief, five, a presentation, no more than five minutes from you?
Sure, I'm just gonna bring it up here that we work with city staff and city planning. They're concerned about the variance number four parking space in the front yard, and we work with them, and we're gonna, we talk to the owner, and we are happy to eliminate the variance number four. The variance number four is not in, and that variance just doesn't affect any other variances.
Okay, let's just make sure we got those modifications. So just pulling up the public notice, the first modification you noted was to variance number? Four?
Four.
Four. Okay, so you'll be eliminating?
Yes.
Okay, so eliminating variance number four, and I believe there was one more modification?
There isn't any modification. I just wanna let you know the space that we propose for the parking space in the front, we're changing to the grass areas, the soft landscape, in trade of the variance number five for the backyard landscape, soft landscape. There isn't any modification.
Sorry, could you just speak a little bit closer to the mic? It is a little bit hard hearing you. So, I've seen elimination of variance number four, and I, that's as far as I got. Is there another modification to the public notice?
No, sir, this is the only modification.
Okay, so just variance number four. Alright, let's get the clock up, and, sir, the floor is yours. Just be mindful as well, please, I'll interrupt if we have some difficulty hearing you, but please stay close to the mic.
You hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. So, the space in the front parking space that we eliminated and be changing to the soft landscaping is about fifteen point sixty-eight square meter, and we're changing to the soft landscaping in trade of the variance number five that we have it on the backyard for the rainwater, you know, discharge, you know, in the front and in the back as well. The variance number one, main height, if we take a look of the side, side elevation, one of the side elevation. If we go to the side elevation.
Let's just pull up the side elevation, sir?
North elevation or south elevation, one of them. Yeah, the side elevation.
Keep going, one more down. There we go.
Yeah, yeah. See, the, the variances for the main height, which is zero point forty-two meter, is just the only for the fifty-six percent of the whole length of the building. For, you know, we believe that, you know, this is the minor for the zero point forty-two meter, and not the entire, you know, length of the building, just the fifty-six percent of that one. For variance number two, regarding the GFA, the GFA is the ratio of the lot. Our, our property, our lot, is twenty feet, sorry, six point ten meter by thirty-four point eight meters, twenty by hundred feet. The property is small, and because of that, you know, the GFA going up to ninety-seven percent. And in this neighborhood, we have, on that street, we have five approval for the same amount of that one. Zero point nine seven, zero point nine seven, one point two eight, all of them, you know, on the best. And we believe that, you know, this proposal in front of you is a match with the neighborhood in term of the scaling and massing of the house. It's just a regular house. If you take a look of the, our cover letter on the map page tree of the cover letter, you can see all the houses surrounding that proposal is the same as we designed here, and is proposed here in front of you. The ancillary building is, we have a lake house, and the ancillary building is a two parking space at the back, which is, you know, the parking space needs, you know, some specific dimension, and again, because our property line is not too long and not too wide, this is the lot coverage that, you know, coming here as a variance. I think that, you know, I cover, you know, all the remaining four variances, and I would happy if the company member had a question, I would happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. You have any questions at this time? Yes, Mr. Niffeld?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From your elevation drawings, it appears that the two balconies, the one at the back and the one on the side, I think, I can't remember whether it's, it's on the, I guess on the west side, that there's a, there's a screen around them. Could you describe it? It looks as though you're extending the main walls of the building as balcony screens. Could you clarify that, and how high the screens would be?
It's not a screen, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a brick that's covering, you know, in the front elevation, and we have a, we have a carpet over there, and again, you know, the, the whole carpet is below the main wall. The main, main wall is eight point five, the main wall is eight point five meter, and these two balcony wall carpet, and you know, the car is below the main wall. It's not covered, it's not higher than the main wall.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get some of that. If, if you're standing on the balcony, either of the balconies, how high is the barrier that's at the edge of the balcony? Is it just railing height, or is it the height of a screen?
It, we, we extended, we extended, we extended the, the brick wall to one point, one point six meter, one point zero six meter as a building code required for the car.
So there's a one point six meter screen for each balcony?
One point zero six.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct, one point zero six, forty-two inches.
One point zero six, yeah, that makes more sense, yeah. Yeah, okay, so it's a, it's basically a handrail height. Thank you very much, that's helpful.
Correct, yeah, it's a handrail.
Alright, further, further questions? Alright, okay. All right, okay, uh, I'd like to hear from our next speaker. Welcome. Make sure the mic's on. Yeah, just give us your name and address first.
Uh, name, Steve Ilku, address two four five Bedford Park Avenue.
All right, so you're the immediate neighbor?
Correct.
Okay. All right, floor is yours.
Okay, so, well, first, we, uh, posted a letter, or I guess submitted a letter with the number of our concerns. Uh, primarily which that the, uh, the builders or owners, uh, didn't consult with any of the neighbors. Uh, upon their receipt of that, uh, they, of course, contacted us, who were able to have a good discussion. Importantly, they removed the, uh, the parking pad, which was not in keeping with the, uh, the street scape, which is the biggest concern we had. Uh, beyond that, through, I've been, I've been at that house, uh, for forty-seven years, so I was born in that house. I know the neighborhood quite well. There are some aspects of the, I guess, the geography or geology, uh, within there with underground streams that, uh, create some water issues. There is, uh, the laneway, uh, adjacent to our block, the city had to take out the concrete and put in pavers because there's been so many water issues to create drainage. So my concern is around the amount or the reduction of soft scape and the overall property, and where the water will go. So right now, I think the only, uh, zoning concern is the amount of soft scape in the backyard, which is being requested for sixty percent when the zoning requires fifty. I think it would be a very modest modification to their plans to fit within zoning to achieve that. The other one aspect, which is the concern we expressed to the, uh, the owners, um, and actually has to do with the, uh, the aforementioned and discussed balcony in the front. Because that, the new house will protrude a fair degree in front of ours. Uh, from what we can tell, if you stand on the balcony, you have a direct, uh, line of sight into our bedroom, which isn't advantageous. So we did speak to the owners and said if you can figure out a way to put some sort of site screen or something there. And I know that's not within the purview of the committee because it's within the zoning to do that. Uh, that's something that we spoke to them about as well, because although privacy isn't, uh, a real expectation in the city of Toronto and in tight neighborhoods, it is a concern of ours. Um, but overall, it's really the, uh, the water issue that we have the concern with. Uh, several years ago, a house, uh, a few doors down at two three nine Bedford Park Avenue, uh, requested sixty or seventy percent coverage. It was granted. Uh, they then proceeded to pave ninety-eight percent of the backyard. The neighboring property at two thirty-seven, uh, that was flooded. And it had never flooded in the history of the house before that. And so beyond that, when we did a internal renovation on our house and had to upgrade our, uh, our sewer line, and we dug through our foundation, that's about four feet down, uh, water was right there. So the aquifers, the river is at one spot, but the aquifers in the neighborhood are quite high. Uh, we also cautioned them about the build. Other houses have no problem putting in a basement. You figure a way to push the water, but the water comes back. And so for the neighboring properties, for the laneway, for future costs of the city having to remediate. We know it's a concern with the proposed rain tax. That wasn't approved, uh, but they're still looking at how to solve those issues. That's where the concerns lie. And so we've expressed it to the, uh, to the owners. That was just on Friday. So I don't think any, uh, changes to the plan would have been made, or maybe not even communicated to the architect. But those are our concerns, and I guess I'll yield the rest of my time.
All right, um, I have a question. So, uh, y- y- you bring up the concern, uh, with respect to the soft landscaping in the rear yard. Is there any, something specific, uh, with respect, uh, that might help, help them achieve, uh, that additional ten percent? I mean, I do, I do acknowledge this, they're pretty limited in terms of space. Once you get the garage in there, once you get the, set the rear main wall of the house, you're basically left with a window, you, access to the basement and a deck.
Well, yeah, and it's the, the actual space in the yard itself, where there could be grass, they're hardscaping fifty percent of that. That's the concern. So i- if they can cut it back to the city regulations at the very least, which would be going from sixty to fifty, that would be enough. The overall reduction across the property is significant. But it's within the zoning, which we can't do anything about, uh, so I appreciate that. And so it's just a modest modification we're asking for. Um, beyond that, these are architectural plans. Once you build the house and then kind of do landscaping, things change. And that's where we saw the, uh, the problem with the neighbors to the south, and eventually the city forced them to go in and rip up their backyard. And so there was two large containers full of concrete. The concrete was about a foot and a half thick, which was pretty impressive. But a great expense, uh, to that neighbor, they had to take all that out, and, uh, I, I don't want to see that situation be repeated for, for all the different reasons that you can imagine.
Of course. Well, I think it's helpful as well, bringing it up now. The applicant is aware, uh, that, you know, that is something is being looked after, one way or another. Um, but to your point, uh, I, I, I do acknowledge is, uh, sometimes it is a problem where applicants will create a landscaping plan after the fact, but, uh, in this case, we're just looking at the plans, uh, that are before us, and one would expect, uh, if this were to be approved, that the, uh, the applicant would construct in accordance with the, uh, site plan, and if they don't, uh, that it should warrant a, a call to the building inspector. I'm, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you at this time. Saint Car as well. Got you on my screen. All right, okay. Uh, yes, Mr. Niffel?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned there's a portion of the rear yard that is being paved that they could revert to grass. Could, could we get the, um, let me see, the first floor plan on the screen for everybody? Is it the space, there's a window well that serves the, the basement rec room. But then, the space that's just beside that, your understanding is that they're gonna pave that?
Well, they're, they're, often the plans are submitted, what happens, but the request is for sixty percent versus a zoning of fifty.
Yeah.
My request is that they just stick to fifty. So whatever modifications they make to stick to fifty percent hardscaping.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'd like to turn it back to the agent, um, specifically, um, glad to see the revision made for the front yard parking, uh, it, it stages the neighbors' concerns. I would like to hear a little bit, uh, about the, uh, concern over the variance for the soft yard landscaping in the rear yard.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, required, the minimum soft landscaping is fifty percent, and we, our proposal is forty percent. It means that, you know, we are ten percent, uh, sure. And this is just, we have a small, uh, a small, uh, entrance from the back to the backyard, which is one point seven meter plus another thirty, zero point three meter for the stairs. It's one point, uh, three seven meter, which is, uh, very small. And, uh, but if you take a look of the front soft landscaping, we have more than, you know, requirement. We are, uh, you know, if you take a look of the soft landscape statistic in the front, we require to have fourteen point fifty-five meter square meter.
Sir, hold on, I'm just gonna, uh, interrupt for a moment. Uh, could you just speak a little bit closer to your mic? Uh, you were giving us some numbers, uh, with respect to the front yard landscaping, uh, and, and I wasn't able to hear.
Okay, the front is, uh, required soft landscaping in the front is, uh, fourteen point fifty-five square meter. But because we don't have any, uh, parking spot here, and our front landscaping, our front soft landscaping, if you take a look of the page two of the drawing, statistic. Go down another page, please. Yes, here. Go down. Yeah, the proposed soft landscaping, the required soft landscaping should be, uh, for a little bit, yeah, is fourteen point fifty-three square meter. But the proposed landscaping is, uh, this is the old one, that this is not the revised. This is the revised, this is not the revised one. Can, can we bring it to revised one? Sure. Go to the page of the statistic.
On balance.
Yes. So the required, the required soft landscaping is forty point five fifty-five. And the proposed soft landscaping is nineteen point eighty-five. We almost have, you know, four square meter above the requirement. It means that, you know, if you take a look of the whole property, the soft landscaping on the back and the front is covered each other. And, you know, we are not sure, you know, there any landis- any soft landscaping.
Okay. All right, any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the site plan, at the back of the proposed building, there's a space that has a, um, a border around it. It, it isn't hatched, so it doesn't appear to be soft landscaping. Is that area to be paved?
Uh, let me see. Site plan. In fr- in front of the stairs, we have, we have the paving.
Oh. Yeah, the hatch does change.
The reason for my question is, is in response to the, to the neighbor, could, could some of that area not be soft landscaping to raise the amount of rear soft landscaping to the bylaw requirement?
So the byla- uh, because of the garage space, because the garage is, uh, is, is, uh, calculated as a, as a hard landscape, this garage space, because of the garage, uh, we have that limitation.
Sir, let me interrupt you for a second. If you, I'm, I'm gonna try and make it less painful for everybody. If you eliminated the paving in the rear yard, and you kept the garage the way it is, would you achieve your, the required landscape cover?
Uh, not the fifty percent, no.
Do you know what that number would be?
Maybe, you know, we get, you know, and, we, we, maybe we get another two percent.
Two percent?
I need to calculate.
It's a point six one, uh, meter projection off of the window well and stair, uh, by roughly six meters, uh, lot width.
Yes.
Can, um, do we, do we want, uh, do we want a calculation of what that is, what that might do to the variance?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, sir, uh, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask that hatched area, and I'm, I'm just referring to the site plan. It's a point six one meter projection off of the window well and, uh, staircase, uh, by roughly the entire width of the lot, uh, which is about six meters. Can you, um, let us know what, uh, percentage of the rear yard, uh, hardscaping that, uh, represents? I, I, I'm gonna give you some time. I'm gonna stand this item down to, uh, give you an opportunity to get that information, uh, for us, and then, uh, we'll come back to you, okay?
Sure. Okay, sure.
All right. All right, so, uh, we're gonna stand down, uh, item number two, uh, for the moment. Uh, in the meantime, I'd like to move to item number three, one oh two, uh, Cheltenham Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling, six variances before us, including building height, building length, east and west side yard setbacks, lot coverage, and front yard setback. On file material from the applicant, a letter, letter of concern from one oh five Buckingham Avenue. We have our agent with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome back, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you. Peter Higgins with Peter Higgins Architect Incorporated, sixty-nine Douglas Drive, Toronto, M four W two B, as in Bob two.
All right, thank you. All right. Just give me one second. I'm gonna ask my colleagues. First of all, before I do that, uh, staff, do we have any other speakers on this item? Sir, I've reviewed the file. I don't need a full presentation, but it might be helpful, uh, if you can address, uh, some of the concerns that were raised by one oh five in their letter of concern. And I'm gonna ask my colleagues, uh, if there's anything specific, uh, that they would like you to address, or any questions? No. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that there is a neighbor at number one hundred, Cheltenham, who is in the audience. I know he'd like to speak. Um, however, just to give you a very quick, uh, run-through, one oh five Buckingham is very slightly downhill, very slightly. It's maybe a one percent slope. Uh, their concern is pool leakage and water runoff from the pool itself, as well as hard landscaping, and all I can say is that as per the building permit requirements, we will go to every uh, proper effort to make sure that the water on the property at number one oh two, that I'm representing, Cheltenham, will stay on the property, and we won't receive a building permit without that proper drainage. We've employed, of course, a, a surveyor, and that surveyor will be involved in creating a lot drainage plan, and that will be submitted to the city. Um, the swimming pool itself, it, it's not a, um, what do you call those? The, uh, zero horizon. It, it has a six inch lip. It can take huge rainstorm without it overflowing. Um, I had planned to reach out to one oh five, uh, I'm sorry, one oh five, uh, Buckingham directly, either myself or the builder that's involved, in order to assuage her concerns. I should say, if I could, that we do have a letter of no objection from the immediate neighbor next door at number one oh four, which I'd like to put forward. Uh, it was received after the deadline for submission. Um, and that letter of no objection notes something that's important, and results in a slightly revised variance to the height. Uh, Mr. William Quinn, who is actually a former client of mine, I designed their house, um, at number one oh four, says here, "Subject to the agreed reduction in roof height by zero point three meters." So I wanted to make sure that the committee, um, understood that our height, which is number one, which was already only, uh, point six over the allowable and only for the front half of the roof, the rest of it, beyond the front half of the roof was at the allowable height. But because Mr. Quinn is a former client, and we wanted to, um, make sure that he was okay with our proposal, we agreed to reduce the height variance to ten point three one.
All right, very good.
We have, I can explain the length variance. Uh, just quickly, the second floor is set back seven feet or, uh, approximately two meters on the east side. That again was in consultation with number one oh two, one oh four, uh, in order to make sure that they had maximum sunlight penetration to their backyard. Uh, they are slightly downhill from us, and, uh, I'm happy to say that they no longer have any objection. Uh, we did meet with both immediate neighbors, one hundred and one oh four, when my client bought the property and hired me, because that's my way of working, to introduce my clients and to suggest we're going to be designing and building a new home. And we kept the lines of communication open by sitting down with both of them, uh, having a direct conversation, showing them the plans, allowing them to keep the plans, hearing their concerns, and then making substantial changes to our design to minimize how much of the house was in the adjacent backyard, how high it was, how close to the property line it was, et cetera. Uh, the main contention for both neighbors seemed to be the covered terrace that we've included at the back of the house, which does not, um, have any variances, length or depth or otherwise from a, uh, coverage standpoint. But they were both concerned. Now, I, I can, I've tried to assure both of them that, um, this terrace is only approximately one meter above, uh, the adjacent grade. It's not way up in the air, whereas... one meter above, uh, the adjacent grade, it's not way up in the air, whereas, as per the photographs that we submitted to you, uh, number one hundred, who is here today, their main floor is almost two meters higher than our main floor because they have a below grade garage, and they're up the slope on Cheltenham, which slopes from west to east. And, um, they have a, a covered terrace, smaller than ours admittedly, but it, there are photographs there that show me standing on that terrace looking into the property of one oh two, and all I can say is that we're substantially lower than that by two meters and the overlook to, from one oh two to the west to one hundred, the neighbor who is here, should be of no concern whatsoever. They'd actually be looking down on our roof, uh, roof of the terrace. So, I, I think we've done a very good job, um, as I always try to do, to listen to neighbors' concerns and to come up with solutions and make those changes, and lastly, one of them was the front yard setback where a small portion of the house is at variance, the main wall of the house, the two-story main wall, is at the allowable front yard setback, but in order, again, to minimize the mass of the house in the backyard, so to speak, the visuals for the two neighbors.
Okay.
We all agreed to move forward.
All right.
And that variance is only a small part of the front facade, it's only a four meter wide section.
Okay, understood.
Um, thank you, Mr. Higgins. All right, I, uh, you did mention that the, our, we do have a, yes, uh, would you like to come down? Uh, I do, I do wanna provide, uh, this gentleman a opportunity to speak, and then we'll hear from you again, Mr. Higgins. Just, uh, I should confirm too, staff, we don't have anybody online for this item? No, okay. Do your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Sanjeev Cement, uh, I'm at, uh, immediately to the west of the property, it's one hundred Cheltenham Avenue.
You're at one hundred, okay, very good.
Uh, so, I, I'd like to, you know, just acknowledge, uh, some of the things that Peter said, he's, he's been great in terms of, uh, you know, open consultation and, uh, and kinda hearing concerns. You know, what I, what I would say overall, though, the, the proposed building still remains very large. There's variances on height, length, width, and lot coverage, and I, I would s- suggest that minor variances requested on almost every aspect, you know, result in an overall a major variance. And, um, you know, s- simply put, the building is too long, uh, and, and it's, the lot coverage is, is, you know, in my opinion, simply, simply too large. It, I, I, I would, I would stress the, the other piece here is, and Peter mentioned the, the covered terrace at the back, and I appreciate that's not technically covered under the lot coverage, but it is usable space, it takes away from the soft scape of the land. There's also a, a pool cabana going in the back, as well as a decent sized pool. That, that is just a massive structure at effectively the peak of the street, uh, that is, as we've mentioned, also requested for, you know, height variance, so, I, from, from my perspective, we've had lots of flooding issues in, in the neighborhood, this is a building close to the peak of a, the street, that's, you know, uh, got, got significant variances for a, a very large building, and from my perspective, you know, it, uh, w- w- we're, we're opposed to the size and length and, uh, height of the structure overall.
All right. I'm gonna ask, uh, my colleagues if they have any questions. I, actually, staff, could we just, we've got the site plan up, um, the building, just a question for you, the building looks more or less, I look at the neighbors on both sides, um, the building looks more or less in line with each property. I do acknowledge there's a, there's a bump out, uh, on your property, um, and there's a bit of a, it does tuck in, uh, but the sort of immediate relationship, uh, with the bump out of, uh, that little part, i- is it, is it not fair to say that that's more or less, your rear main wall, that bump out is more or less in line with their proposed rear main wall?
Yeah, so that, you're, you're absolutely right, that's a very small piece of our house that, that juts out, so, y- you're absolutely right, that, that aligns, but if you look where the door is, our, our, our actual house, the bulk of our house, is set in whatever that is, several meters from, from that bump out.
Right.
Right, so that, that's one thing I'd say, and then, secondly, the covered terrace extends significantly past the, the bump out of, of the, of the proposed building.
Okay.
Whi- which is effectively usable, livable space, and I appreciate it's not covered in, in, in the calculations here, but e- effectively, add another meter and a half of, of, uh, variance plus a covered terrace, and you've got a massive property, is kinda my proposition.
Okay, and, uh, that, the bump out, rec- noted breakfast area, is that a single-story, two-story?
Uh, it's a two-story house.
It's two-story, so it's a full two stories with, include the bump out. I, I do acknowledge it does bump in, um, but I just, to get some understanding of how the relationship of the massing, uh, to what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful for me. Just check, any, uh, questions from my colleagues? I just wanna see, I, I, staff, I can't see, uh, Ms. Sankar on, uh, we can get, there she is. Ms. Sankar, did you have any questions? No, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I, I do wanna go back to Mr. Higgins, and I'm gonna ask him to, if he can address, uh, specifically, uh, some of the concerns, uh, that, uh, that you've just raised.
I will do my best, thank you. Could staff please put up the most recent drawings that we, uh, sent in? Not true who I should be looking at. Uh, but we have on the, uh, the two side elevations of our proposed house, a heavy, uh, outline of the neighboring houses, and I'm not sure this is the latest, but carry on to the elevations, please. The side elevations continue? Yeah, the, these are not, um, may I approach the screen so I can look at it?
You can approach, but don't give any commentary till you're back at the...
Yeah, this is not the latest.
Hold on.
The only reason I ask is because it clearly shows, from our survey and photographic information, the outline of Mr., um, sorry, Senjit's, um, I'm getting mixed up with.
The full extent of his building, uh, rather than just.
You asked a good point, and he answered correctly, and if you go to the photographs of the house, his, uh, breakfast area is two-story, it has a, a gable, and you can see it there, um, whereas all of our designs have a, an inset fully hipped roof, we have no gables, we only have three decorative dormers at the front, which don't affect anybody except for, that's the aesthetic of the house that the client wanted. There again, you see, this is me standing in the backyard of my client's property at one oh two, looking at number one hundred, which is uphill, and as I mentioned, their ground floor is two meters higher than our proposed ground floor, so that is their breakfast area window, I've been inside, because I met with Senjit inside, and, um, and then to the, to the, uh, to the right on this photograph is their covered terrace. If you could continue with the photographs, just scroll through, that's our front, and I should say about our front, the, we're in line basically where the, where the bay window is, and the bump out that, uh, we're talking about that is the front yard setback is actually behind where the, uh, gabled second floor extension is on this original house, so, in terms of the impact on the neighbors, I don't see that it will be of any consequence. We're also raising up the driveway so that it's a, um, an at-grade driveway versus this one, which is slightly downhill, and if you continue, okay, the one on the bottom there is Senjit's rear yard with, whoop, if you can go back up, go back up, sorry. Uh, again, that's their two-story portion that is adjacent to, uh, our proposed house, and that is their raised, um, terrace that overlooks our house, which you can see in the bottom photograph, and I think there's one more as well to go down. This is me standing on, uh, number one hundred's terrace, looking down at, at the property, and if you can go one further, I think there's one more, yes. So, that's actually looking directly across from the terrace at one hundred to the one oh two property, and, um, it's hard to tell here, but there, you're looking downwards to the, um, to the adjacent property. Um, in terms of Ms. of Senjit's comments that are, uh, have to do with the totality of the, um, variances becoming too big altogether, we have, at this point, a point three meter height variance only to the front half of the roof, I don't see that as an issue, that is more about balance of roof to wall. Uh, we do not have a wall height variance, uh, side yard setbacks match both number one hundred and number one oh four in terms of their one point two meter setbacks, which is a pretty normal setback for Lawrence Park. In terms of the length, I mentioned to you that, um, if we could go back to the site plan for just a moment, please, that there is, uh, there's reasons for the length variance, the, uh, the greatest length is on the east side, not on the west side, adjacent to, um, Senjit, you can see that our, um, kitchen area is, is basically at the allowable, and the only variance is in the family room, which is pushed back because of the garage, and we're essentially in line with both neighbors, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the, um...
Just gonna ask you to wrap up.
Okay, if we have the second floor planned, you can also see where we shifted the second floor back by, uh, one more, two meters, yeah, there we go. So, it, again, it's a little hard to tell on this one, but the ground floor line is two meters north of where the master bedroom wall is, and, um, I just think that, in terms of the variances we have, uh, from my experience as an architect, especially in this neighborhood where, where we've done hundreds of renovations and new builds, that this is all very reasonable, and, uh, we have cut back the house a lot to try to bring on board both neighbors, I'm sorry that Senjit feels otherwise, but.
Okay. We're gonna wrap it there?
Yeah, I'd like to wrap.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, any questions? Staff, if we can, uh, just ensure Ms. Sankar is, uh, visible, at least in one, there we go. All right, I'll ask again, any questions? All right, okay, no questions. It looks like we're ready to take this into committee for decision? Um, Mr. Higgins, you can, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Now, um, all right, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I personally do not have any difficulty with the application that's before us, I think it, uh, it is sensitively attempting to address the context, um, in which it finds itself. I will mention that unlike many applicants, this applicant, uh, went to the trouble of showing this context on all the plans, including the elevation.
Mr. Niffel, can I just get you to speak into your microphone, please? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that better? Sorry. I was, um, uh, recapping, uh, I don't have difficulty with the application that's before us, I think that, um, the applicant has gone to some pains to try and create a project that is contextually, um, sympathetic, uh, he has as well, in all of the submission material, the drawings, um, indicates the adjacent properties, which I very much appreciated in evaluating the application, you could make a clear judgment of how well it fits with adjacent properties. The only issue appears to be soft landscaping, and there is no soft landscaping variance, so that's really not, um, a subject for discussion. The concern, uh, seems to be almost entirely with this rear porch, it's one-story high, and as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, it does tend to line up with the addition, um, on the neighboring property. In addition, um, Mr. Higgins has, um, provided, um, privacy screens on either end of the, of the terrace to provide privacy for the adjacent owners, so, based on that, I, I'm very supportive of the application, and I would be prepared to move a motion into that effect.
Yeah, I, I might, I might just add as well, the, there's, there's a considerable amount of depth as well to the lots, which helps to mitigate, uh, length and depth variances, the, the rear main walls are, I think, more or less in line, um, and in terms of the drainage as well, uh, again, there's no soft landscaping variance, but uh, it's, it's, um, it's nice to see a landscaping plan flushed out to this degree. I'm also happy to see, uh, a good landscaping buffer, uh, around the perimeter of the rear yard, uh, to ensure that water that does escape, uh, is able to absorb and not runoff onto the neighbor's property, so, I just wanted to provide those, uh, few comments. Um, I, I'm gonna ask, uh, colleagues if they have any other comments? None? All right, uh, Mr. Niffel, are you prepared perhaps to bring a motion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to move approval of this application, um, subject to two conditions, forestry condition number two, and the provision of privacy screening as indicated on the first floor plan. There is a screen on the terrace on both ends, and it shows on the first floor plan.
Um, I might also ask whether or not we need to tie, uh, the height to elevations, but it's, it's, it's substantial increase, it's just.
Sorry, may I make one comment?
Yeah, Mr. Bartolo.
We reduced the height to, to ten decimal three one meters on the floor here.
Yes, thank you for, for bringing that up, so we, we got that modification as well.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm not sure you can tie it to the plans, I'm not sure that they refer.
Ah, good point, okay. I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't think I have too much concern that it's gonna be, uh, change given the degree to which this has been flushed out and the quantit- quantitatively small, uh, this is a bit incremental increase of the variance, we're not talking about, uh, leaps and bounds here. So, I, I apologize, uh, Mr. Niffel, uh, your motion, uh, is, you, you've completed your motion?
Yes, I have.
Okay. He asked for the screening, uh, portion.
That screening of the rear terrace be provided in accordance with, or as shown on the first floor plan, it shows on the site pla- it shows on all the drawings, but I think it's clearest on the first floor plan. It shows on the elevation, it shows on the elevations, it shows on the first floor, it shows on, it's not as clear on the site plan, so I thought maybe the first floor plan was the best one to choose.
All right. And we've got forestry as well. Yes. Okay. Do I have a second or for that motion? Uh, Ms. Sankar? All right, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, uh, the application as modified, uh, has been approved with condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. All right, we're gonna go back to item number two, which, uh, I stood down earlier. Well, let's get the agent back, and, uh, specifically, we are asking for the, uh, portion of the rear yard, uh, that was hardscaped in front of the stair and window well, uh, i- in terms of a percentage, uh, so if we can get our agent back, uh, just state your name and address again for us?
Uh, my name is Saif Mahbub, sixty seventy Bayview Avenue, suite three oh two.
All right. Sir, uh, did you get that calculation for us?
Yes, it's gonna be adding four percent to the soft landscaping.
It's, it's, it counts for about four percent?
Correct.
Sir, just, uh, it's, it's a little bit hard to hear you.
It's four percent, correct.
It's about four percent, all right. Uh, Mr. Bartolo, is that, is that helpful, the answer?
It's, uh, yeah, it's a helpful answer for me, and it, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
All right, so, uh, let's go into committee?
All right, so, generally speaking, I think, uh, the applicant has, has worked with the city and the neighbors to address that front yard parking concern, and, uh, therefore, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application, subject to the following revisions, that variance number four be eliminated, and that variance number five be modified to, um, the proposed rear yard landscaping is forty-four decimal six percent.
All right. Do I have? I see urban forestry number three.
Uh, yes, thank you for the reminder, and I will make it subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memo attached.
Thank you. All right, do I have a second or? Uh, Ms. Sankar is seconding that motion, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on. Item number four. 1710 to 1736 Bayview Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the previously approved nine-story mixed-use building, which is currently under construction. Variances are being requested to allow for a 0.3 meter increase in building height to alter the permitted location of functional building elements on the roof, and to reduce the supply of visitor parking. The variances before us are related to building height, height, area of mechanical structures, and parking related to residential visitors and non-residential uses. On file, material from the applicant, an email from Metrolinks, a late report from community planning, and a late memo from transportation. All right. We have our agent with us.
Morning, Mr. Chair, committee members.
Good morning. Your name and address?
Yes, my name is Ryan Doherty. I'm a land use planner with Bows Fields, agent to the application. My address is 3 Church Street, Suite 200.
All right. Just give me one moment. I should ask, is anybody in the gallery here to speak to this item? And I'll also ask staff if anybody's online. We don't have anybody online. All right. Perhaps we can just focus in on a reduced presentation length, unless my colleagues need a full presentation on this. I did...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Sorry, there was something that I did need you to put up if you're going through this. I don't seem to have that transportation report that you'd said.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Sankar. I was just gonna bring that up. The... I did want the applicant to address some of the comments from transportation. It is my understanding that they are requesting some additional materials to be submitted.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, on that, on that end, I just wanted to also point out there was a late staff report from community planning as well. So there's two items we can put up, if you'd like. We can start with the staff report that's on your screen, the recommendation. We freeze the screen right there. You can see the recommendation from community planning's report. After you've had a good look at that, we could move on to the late transportation report.
Yeah, let's pull up the transportation report. Seems the community planning doesn't have any concerns other than the recommendation to tie substantially in accordance with. So, actually, let's go to our agent. If you can just address some of the comments from transportation for us, that would be helpful.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to clarify something. This transportation report was never actually shared with us, nor is it posted to the AIC. So this is actually the first time I'm seeing or hearing of this report. That being said, I'm happy to go through it and address it the best way that I can, but I just wanna flag for yourself and the committee that this report was not made available to the applicant or myself.
All right, fair enough. I should ask, would it be helpful to... Would you like to address it on the spot? Or would it be helpful if I stand the item down to provide you an opportunity to take a look at it?
If it could be circulated to me, maybe I could be the next item up, and I could come back and address it. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding what Transportation Services is asking for, if the committee is okay with that. I probably only need 10, 15 minutes to look at this.
Yeah, very good. I suspect that it's... They're more... I'm gonna let you read the report, and then we'll discuss it. Okay. Let's stand this item down, then, so we can provide the agent an opportunity to take a look at the transportation memo that was issued late. All right. Staff, committee, how are we doing for breaks? Do we need a relief break, or we're okay? Yeah? Okay. All right. We're gonna take five minutes relief break, and we will resume shortly after 11:25 a.m.
Yes. Yeah, that's right, 100%.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Are you... Are you that... Which house?
Oh, don't... We're the ones that get all the water.
Around what? So, on six... At the end of the... Okay.
Well, all the water comes down.
Are you in the new house? Yeah. Yeah, I know. I live there. Plus, everyone's...
We also found... I think something... But the understanding about where and what... The double block... We try close to the building. If it's near to the opening, I think it's... I think it's...
Yeah, I think so.
But it does...
Number one is going to...
Unlying, yeah. We sent a position there. What's happening? You know what? Not eight or twelve.
No, number eight, that's where the...
Oh. Behind, next to us, and twelve is behind us. I thought they were...
All right. We are back. We're just waiting on... There we go. Fantastic. All right. We're back now. Okay, so we were on item number four. I'd like to go back to the agent, see if he's had time to look at the transportation memo. We have Mr. Doherty with us.
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
All right. Have you had enough time to look at that memo?
Yes, I have. Thank you for the five minutes. That was very helpful.
Yeah, no, of course. I hate to put people on the spot, especially when reports are not filed on time. Okay, so, yeah, if you could provide us just with a little... Perhaps you could speak to that matter?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And first, I'd also just like to mention that we have no issues with the recommendation and condition from community planning to tie those specific drawings to the approval. So that's not an issue. Maybe if we can just stay on this transportation report in the conclusions. And I just wanna first speak to conclusions one and three, which speak to a pavement marking and signage plan, as well as appropriate clauses for... In agreements of purchase and sale for small car parking spaces. This application actually isn't requesting any variances for small car parking spaces or obstructed parking. The site-specific bylaw that applies to this site actually already allows a certain number of obstructed spaces. I believe it's 5%. So the plans would already be in compliance with that, and we would not be seeking variances. So, I really don't think conclusions one and three are applicable to this application in particular.
Yep.
With request... Yeah, with request to conclusion number two, which is a request for additional survey information relating to the proposed reduction in visitor parking. So we did submit a parking report from WSP, our client's transportation consultant, in support of the variance. Just to provide a bit more background on that, the variance, which is variance number four, would reduce the required visitor parking supply from 19 to 11 spaces, so a reduction of eight. There's no reductions being requested for the resident supply. And in fact, what's happening is those visitor spaces are being converted into resident spaces. The request is really being made due to the site's proximity to the Lee Side LRT station, changing market conditions with respect to parking demand, as well as the city's reduced parking standards, which, as you may know, require no resident spaces and reduced requirements for visitor spaces. So, for this site in particular, under the city's new zoning standards, would only require four visitor parking spaces. That's under the Parking Zone A requirement. What we're doing here is requesting the Parking Zone B requirement, which is 11 spaces. So we're actually still seeking more visitor parking than would be required if a new application were to be filed on this site today. And just one last thing I want to mention is, we brought forward a very similar application for the same client in North York at 1410 Bayview, so just down the road, which was approved by the North York Committee of Adjustment in January, which proposed a similar reduction in visitor parking. And that was ultimately accepted by Transportation Services with respect to that application. So we're simply looking to do the same thing here as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doherty, I take your point for under point one and three. Under number two, if that became a condition, are you saying you've actually already submitted? Under number two, um, if that became a condition, are you saying you've actually already submitted the survey information? Or would there be a problem with adding that as a condition?
I, I.
I mean.
Let him answer.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I, I, actually, I'll, I'll jump in. I, I question what that might do, because if they're gonna get, if they're requesting information, okay, they've got the information, the variance has already been approved. So what are they gonna do? Recommend, make recommendations based on something that's already been approved?
Fair enough. I was trying to determine if what they're asking for here is exactly what has been submitted.
Uh, okay. Thank you for that point of clarification.
Yes. Yes, so we, we have done cer- oh, my apologies. I can't quite uh, I can't quite hear.
Please go ahead, Mr. Doherty.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Uh, Mr. Niffel, do you mind?
Oh, I, I was trying to determine if what's requested under the second point, is that what you have already submitted? Or is that an additional submission that you feel is not necessary? I gather that you don't think it's necessary, but I'm trying to figure out, are we talking about something that's already um, in the hands of the, of the city or not?
Yeah, so I, I, I'm happy to clarify, and thank you for repeating. So what the city is asking for, what staff are asking for, is additional on-street parking surveys be done through specific periods of time. So they're referencing uh, weekday and weekend overnight surveys. It's in the top paragraph there on that. Oh, I guess it's there as well. So they're asking for additional information to be provided in the, the WSP report that has been submitted. We don't think that is required. This work was actually done as part of the other application at fourteen ten Bayview, which ultimately supported the visitor parking reduction and concluded that there was a significant supply of visitor parking in the area. So we don't think it's required for this application, which is just up the road.
Thank you very much. That's clear.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty. Uh, let's take this into committee. Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I think what's being requested here uh, is, is minor. Um, I'm in agreement with what uh, has been noted uh, in the staff report that was uh, provided. Um, I'm not of the opinion that the additional transportation uh, report is gonna be necessary in order to make a a decision on this, and I, I don't think any of the changes made here are gonna have a meaningful impact on the neighborhood or community, whether it comes to height or the, the change in eight parking spots across a two-hundred unit or so building, or just under two-hundred units. So, um, and especially when we consider that the um, the planning regulations have changed since the time of application. If they were reapply, uh, some of this wouldn't even uh, be relevant. So with all that said, I will put forward a motion to approve this application uh, subject uh, to the recommendation number one in the uh, staff report dated February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, that the proposed mechanical penthouse be developed substantially in accordance with the roof plan and east side elevation drawings attached to this report.
All right. Second by Mr. Niffel. All right. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Uh, that is approved with uh, condition.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Item number five, one-ten Hillhurst Boulevard. The purpose of the application is to uh, propose uh, additional habitable space below grade, requiring two variances, building depth, building length. On file material from the applicant. We have our agent with us.
Adi Shokiri, three-twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they require a full presentation from you. Okay, I see head shaking. Uh, Mr. Shikiri, welcome back. Um, I don't require a full presentation. I'm going to ask if you have uh, any concern, uh, should an approval uh, be granted? Uh, any concern tying to uh, site plan? Or a condition that uh, the variances shall only apply to the below-grade section?
Uh, no concerns and no comment on my side. I'm fine with it.
All right. Uh, if there are no comments, uh, Ms. Sankar, yes?
Sorry, I meant to uh, just move, make a motion if needed.
Oh, no, please go ahead. Please go ahead.
All right. I didn't have a problem with uh, this application. I do believe it's minor and self-explanatory. And for that reason, I'll motion to approve this application, uh, tying it to the um, the below-grade portion of uh, recognized in the site plan.
Uh, just a point of clarification, uh, on some of the wording there. Uh, is, is, are we tying uh, a condition uh, that the variances shall only apply to the below-grade uh, portion? Section?
Yes, that's what I meant. Yes.
Staff, do we need a um?
It may be a little easier if we just tie it to a plan with that little. We can bring up the floor plan number. I just wanna make sure we have the right floor plan number. I think it's the basement one, which is A zero-two. I'll let staff bring that up.
Uh, do we need to? Need to, to tie it to side elevation? Or the basement plan suffice?
That's, it's up to you. I just wanna make sure that we're looking at the right plan. So we can just throw up A zero-two?
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to tie it to the basement plan, but I also think uh, we need to ensure that those variances aren't uh, permitting uh, that length or depth above grade. So I'd, I, I question whether or not we need to tie one of the elevations, side elevations, or uh, the other plans. It won't hurt. Okay. Um, I, I, I'm gonna ask Ms. Sankar, she's putting the motion forward, uh, what her preference or emotion is.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I have no problem with tying it to um, the site plan as submitted, specifically um, uh, drawings A zero-two. Um, should you want to add any amendments for side elevations, I'm welcome to that as well. If you could state that clearly, I'll be okay.
I just wanted to clarify, A zero-two is a basement plan, I believe.
Yeah, I think, I think we might need to tie to all floor plans, just the, the variance with respect to the depth.
So should we just say tie it to the site plan as of submitted? Because.
Well.
Can encompass everything.
I don't know what my colleagues feel, but my only concern with the site plan is uh, then it, that uh, those variances essentially could be, unless it specifically states it's for the basement only, um, and actually, the site plan just shows the patio. So Mike, I just wanna ensure that this, these variances are there essentially to facilitate uh, the extension of the basement only. So site plan and A zero-two, that would suffice. Cause I think the site plan shows this patio. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so three.
Okay, so my original motion stands, I presume?
So it's A zero-one, which is the site plan, and A zero-two, which is the basement plan. Is that, I just wanna make sure that is the member, part of members' motion. I just wanna make sure I recorded it properly.
Yes, I'll accept that. Thank you.
Yes, second by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? All right, that. Mr. Kubu, you're, I saw your hand, yeah? Okay, all right, that's unanimous. Uh, that is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, uh, we dealt with. Item was deferred. Uh, so we're on to item number seven, seven-one-two Eglington Avenue East. The purpose of this application is to construct a three-story fourplex. Uh, the development has previously been approved. Uh, however, revised proposal uh, requires, or seeking, I should say, a decrease uh, in the front yard setback. Uh, so we've got a variance for front yard setback, uh, as well as another variance for front yard soft landscaping. On file material from the applicant, memo from Urban Forestry, staff report from Community Planning, email from Metrolinks, and a letter of objection from the Lee Side Resident Association. All right.
And three, you, Mr. Chair, is a late counselor letter.
Yes, we do uh, have a late counselor uh, letter. Uh, staff, we can just bring up that letter. Um, and let's get our agents online.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Christian Chan, land use planner for the applicant, and my address is one-five-seven Adelaide Street West, Toronto, Ontario.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chan. I, there is some opposition to this item. I'm gonna ask for a presentation uh, from you. I think.
Absolutely, sir.
Predominantly stemming around the front yard uh, setback. Uh, I, so uh, maybe just as, to, to help you kinda focus in the uh, presentation there.
Yes, sir, thank you. And also, uh, since the counselor's letter is new to me, um, if staff can email to me, I'll have time to review it. Uh, if there are any um, comments from the Lee Side Residents Association, I can review it in the intervening time when they're making their presentation, that would be much appreciated, sir.
Sure, uh, and, and I should note, uh, if you would, uh, at any time, uh, like a few minutes, I, I'm happy to stand the item down, uh, just to provide you an opportunity to uh, bring yourself up to speed, uh, given that we do have a late uh, letter from the counselor. So just uh, just let me know. Um, but I, I, the uh, I think the matters of the concern are, are pretty uh, uh, consistent uh, with respect to, between the letter of objection and the comments from counselor.
Yes, I'm just briefly scanning it, and I think.
Yeah, take your time.
At this moment, sir, so. Um, I'll just go into it, uh, sir. So the proposal uh, for this multiplex was previously before the committee um, in October, November twenty-twenty-four, under file A zero-four-five-three, and it's proposed in a very similar form. It was approved by the committee, so nothing has changed in terms of the building length, the layout, and the proposed build form. What is being asked in this application is a one-meter uh, reduction in the front yard setback over what was previously approved. Um, this is as because there was a condition on the previous decision notice uh, that required Urban Forestry's review of the application in order to submit for a tree injury uh, permit. Um, so we've had those discussions with Urban Forestry uh, in November twenty-twenty-four, and it was a, a conversation that was going on for a number of months. Um, one of the conditions was uh, that prior to submission of the permit to injure, um, we had to engage in discussions with Urban Forestry. If I can ask staff to kindly, please put the site plan, which is on page, PDF page four of the revised plans. Um, in this discussion, um, there was originally a five-point-four-meter tree protection zone radius around the tree. So the original application, on this application, was to have a three-point-eight-meter front yard setback. However, through discussions with Urban Forestry, um, I think it's the next page to, to staff there. So, uh, as you can see here in the image, that radius for the rear yard tree was determined that the critical root zone, rather than the tree protection zone, could be used in order to avoid any construction of the rear elements of the building into the critical root zone, which is a three-point-five-meter radius. Um, so certain elements would be within the three-point-five meters, particularly the, the, the sunken patio that you see in the rear yard there. That sunken patio is to enable accessible elevator access for the lower-level unit, which is, which is designed as an accessible three-bedroom unit. Um, so we worked with Urban Forestry to develop the revised positioning of the fourplex to place it, the elements associated with the fourplex outside of that three-point-five-meter critical root zone. So the building massing has not changed from the original proposal. Uh, the only change is that the building is positioned more to the south, so we could avoid that critical root zone to preserve the tree. Uh, we also discussed the nature and extent of these revised variances with community planning. So they were involved in discussions with us too, uh, who were apprised of the discussions with Urban Forestry and to address the matters of construction in proximity to the rear yard tree. So we had joint meetings with both Community Planning and Urban Forestry. So pursuant to these discussions, we revised this application from three-point-eight to five-point-oh meters pursuant to the urban uh, city planning staff report. Um, so we were modifying the variances to uh, five-point-zero meters and sixty-seven-point-four meters for the soft yard, front soft yard landscaping. Just to go on a few other items. Just like to note also that this property is now subject to the uh, o- official plan amendment seven-seven-eight, which is the Housing Action Plan Avenues, mid-rise and mixed-use area study. So this is since February tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Now, the site is within, within uh, on map two, identified as an avenue. So the Housing Action Plan directs staff to review and update zoning permissions and standards along avenues to remove obstacles to their redevelopment with new housing. And that avenues play a key role in tunnels growth. This is also a site that's within the layer, major transit station area. Uh, with regards to variance number one, uh, a rationale for the five-point-oh-meter front yard setback. So obviously, this is to preserve both the tree and also maintaining the three-bedroom units on each floor to be family-sized units that were originally proposed and approved by the Committee of Adjustment. And just to also know that this is a rental, uh, purpose-built rental building with one accessible unit in the basement. The building's footprint was required to be shifted to the south uh, from six-point-oh meters. Uh, this is also to maintain that rear yard, sunken patio, accessible elevator access. Um, we also have addressed concerns from the nearby residents and the Lee Side Residents Association, because they have raised um, concerns regarding impacts of the site triangles at the intersection of Ramsay Road and Eglington Avenue, because this is a corner lot.
Yep, just final words.
I did some measurements, and there's at least a six-meter site triangle in the corner rounding radius, and it meets the city's standards of a six-meter count, corner rounding radius for the intersection to local roads and from arterial roads. Uh, I also note that the intersection is a four-way signalized intersection with marked pedestrian crossings with pedestrian and vehicular signals. Um, Transportation Services has not commented and has raised no objection to the pro- proposed front yard setback to the building affecting sightlines around the northeast corner of that intersection. Uh, also to note that the existing front yards, in the immediate context, that the, uh, that are between six and seven-meter front yards. I do note, and as you may have seen on your site visit, that most of these front yards are to provide parking spaces and front yard driveways and parking spaces that back onto Eglington Avenue East.
Mr. Chan, just final words, please.
Absolutely not proposed.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Yes, I, I don't know if I should uh, speak to the front yard soft landscaping, but it doesn't seem to be the crux of this application. However, the building being pushed up, there is a significant, significant increase in the rear yard landscaping to compensate for the seven-point-six percent uh, reduction in the front yard.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just confirm if the applicant made any changes?
Yeah, Mr. Chan, I, our Deputy Secretary Treasurer is asking if there's been any changes to the application. Uh, my apologies, I should have asked at the onset.
Yes, we are seeking modification to the two variances that uh, uh, Community Planning staff have recommended. So we will be uh, modifying the variances to. So we will be modifying the variances to, from 3.8 meters to five meters for front yard setback, and then from 67.2 to 67.4 for the minimum front yard soft landscaping.
Okay, so five meters on the front yard setback? Okay.
Yes, sir. And can I just also speak to the conditions that were imposed on the previous application that we would like, that we would seek to be maintained in, should this, these variances be approved as well?
I'm gonna cut you there, but we, I have some questions. My colleagues may have some questions. We do have another speaker, and we're gonna ask for rebuttal from you as well. So hopefully, we'll find an opportunity for you to make further submissions. We are a full minute over our five-minute time, so I'm gonna stop you there. But I personally have a question.
But I personally have a question.
With respect to the, you made a comment about the front yard setback variance helping to necessitate full family-sized units. It, just, is it your submission that without that variance, you'll have to remove one of the bedrooms? Is the floor plate is not large enough to support that? Because it seems to me, just based on the floor plate, substantial living space at the rear.
That's correct, sir. If I can ask staff to go to the floor, ground floor plan on the revised plans.
I'd also just ask, Mr. Chan, if you could just make sure you're speaking into the mic, so we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, just making sure that this is okay right now?
Yes, we can hear you much better now.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. So as we can see on the floor plans here, I think you can just go to the next, next page. Thank you, staff. If you could zoom in. So yes, there are three bedrooms in each of the units, and the primary bedroom at the front. If there were to be a reduction in the front yard, or sorry, if we would have to adhere to the previous committee's decision, that primary bedroom would take, about half of that primary bedroom would be gone. Therefore, the unit would have to be a two-bedroom unit. And the rationale and the design of this building was originally to provide a rental, rent for rental units for families of three bedrooms. Yes, I can understand that there is a larger kitchen, living, and dining room to the rear. But again, that is one combined room for both cooking, living, and dining. And therefore, that's the reason why the design is supporting that size of a room, because it's the only communal room for the entire family in this, in this unit, or in all three units. And therefore, that's the reason why the size of that unit is being maintained as is, as it was in the original proposal. And again, sir, if it would be a six-meter front yard setback in that primary bedroom at the south end of the building, that's to the left of the screen, would have to be significantly reduced, and it wouldn't be a functional bedroom at that point. So in this, in this proposal, what we're seeking to achieve is a balance between maintaining the interests and protection of the tree for urban forestry, while also providing fully three-bedroom rental units for families. I'd just like also to note that this is on a major street in a major transit station area, and now on an avenue, which the city seeks to urbanize.
Okay, let's just, let's just focus in on a question. And do you have a square footage for that ground floor unit, that three-bedroom unit? What's the interior square footage for that unit?
So each of the units, in fact, are consistent with each other. So each of these three units, let me just go to the site stats, I think it's about, each of the units is 107.1 meters square. So in square feet, let me just convert that quickly, is about, is 1,153 square feet. So 1,153 square feet.
Okay.
For the three-bedroom unit.
Okay, all right. Any other questions at this time? Okay. We do have a resident with us, Mr. Cutel. Welcome back, Mr. Cutel.
Mr. Chair, thank you. My name is Jeff Cutel. I'm co-president of the Leeside Residents' Association, which is headquartered on, at 1601 Bayview Avenue. The, the two neighbors were unable to come today. They're unwell. I have got their material here, which I'm happy to speak to, if you would allow me to put that into the record. But anyway, I'll. Yeah, so we, we are, have strong opposition to the two variances. We were previously opposed to the, the application last fall, which was approved. But that he did, but he did get approved. So the, the required front yard setback is 7.37 meters. The current application is now proposing to reduce it to five meters. That's 2.37 meters less. That's 7.8 feet. That's significant. That's kind of fundamentally a precedent-setting change for that whole stretch from Ramsay East. And so first of all, the application reads, "To construct a three-story fourplex development" that has been previously approved. However, revised proposal requires decreased front yard due to rear tree protection preservation. It's apparent that this is a false imperative and represents an inappropriate description for, for an application. The statement that the revised proposal requires decreased front yard implies there are no other solutions, but this is patently incorrect. The obvious other solution is to reduce the building length. The description for the application favors approval of the application, whereas the application should be neutral, impartial to the application. Perhaps this, this biased description originates with the applicant, not the city, as the application is by zoning waiver, not by zoning examination. The application fails to point out that as a result of shifting the house forward, the new build, 712, will stick out 7.8 feet beyond the neighboring property, 714, and, and all the adjacent properties east of 712. They're all consistent. The front yard setback required by the zoning buyer is actually the same amount as the consistent building setback for the homes on the street. In other words, the proposed reduced building setback affects more than this application. It negatively impacts all the properties east of the new build. This disruption to the building setback on the street is unacceptable to the neighbors and the street, and in our opinion, should be unacceptable to city planning and the city, and the Committee of Adjustment. Eglington Avenue East is a major street in Leeside and in the city of Toronto. Why should the neighbors and the community be the ones to lose, rather than the applicant? In addition, there's a second important point to be made against the variance application for front yard setback, a safety concern. 712 Eglington Avenue is the corner property on the northeast corner of Eglington and Ramsay. This is, as you know, is a very busy intersection with an elementary school only one block north, another private elementary school one block northwest, and a high school one block southwest. There have been several crashes over the year at this intersection, usually because drivers on Eglington unfortunately tend to run red lights. Speeding on this stretch of Eglington is also common, as it is between the two bottlenecks at Laird and Brent Cliff and at Bayview, leading to considerable driver frustration and by extension, aggression. So anything that reduces sightlines, such as reduced front yard setbacks at corner properties, should be prohibited. There are kids going, turning around that corner all the time. In closing, this proposal is not in keeping with the intent of the existing zoning bylaws or the official plan and does not meet the test for approval of minor variances. We request that the application for variances be denied. There are clearly other solutions to this application. I do have the, the letter from the, the immediate neighbors. If I may be allowed to read that into the record, they were sick.
I don't know, well, you have a minute left, so to.
I'm sorry?
You can read it, but we can't, I'm not gonna, we won't submit it into the record, but you can read it aloud.
Okay. The names of, Jodson Hugh and Karen Wang. They're owners of 714 Eglington East. We aim to have good relations with our neighbors at 712 Eglington East and respect the neighbor applicant proposal to build a four, a three-story fourplex next door to us. We respect the decisions, the city's decision to allow him to do so. However, we object to this second minor variance application for safety reasons. It will create a blind spot for us getting in and out of our driveway, as well, there are safety concerns for the community at large. People and cars going around this corner will have less time to see what's coming at them. Children often whiz around the corner, as well as runners. There have been many car crashes in the corner as drivers rush to avoid the red light. There was a bus stop also in front of the applicant's house, an elementary and middle school, some of the things I said.
Final words.
There will also be a new bike lane installed on Eglington Avenue, which runs right in front of the house and adds to the chaos sometimes at this corner. Safety should be the priority. Anything that reduces pedestrians and drivers sightlines, we oppose. Currently, the applicant has erected a six-foot-tall fencing around the said property that juts out all the way out to the curb, and we have almost no sightline of Ramsay Road, which has, which caused us to almost kill a woman in a wheelchair and a young lady as they went around Ramsay Road in front of our driveway.
Wrap it up, Mr. Cutel?
Yes. They've asked the applicant to take down the fence or bring it closer to the house, and he has ignored us. We can only imagine, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we get the gist, similar to the concerns that you raised. All right, any questions for Mr. Cutel? Yes, Mr. Kibou.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Cutel, you pointed out a number of issues, including safeties and neighbor pointed issue about blind spot. What would you suggest that these applicants does to improve? Are you really just questioning the application to be dismissed?
Well, what we've, what happened here is the tree considerations require, not required, but, but in order to preserve the tree, which, which I think the, all the neighbors want to preserve that tree, the applicant said, "Just move it forward." But there, there have to be other solutions. We look at the site, look at the plans for the house. I mean, it's a three-story, you know, with four, four units in it. It's a massive property. It's a box on a box on a box. Surely, there can be some, some revised plans produced for the units. We heard from the applicant that there's over 1,000 square feet there. This is just for each unit. These are not small units. Surely, it's in the hands of the architect.
Any other questions? All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Cutel. All right, let's go back to the agent.
Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you, Ms. Chan. Floor is yours. If you can just address specifically the concerns that were brought up by Mr. Cutel and the immediate neighbor, that would be helpful for us.
Yes, sir, thank you. And I was sure to take notes on Mr. Cutel's points, and I thank him for his comments and his continuous involvement in the community. With regards to this being precedent-setting, in my respectful submission, I don't believe so. This, this variance that's being requested with the front yard setback is on a major street, and the official plan policies in chapter 4.1 also state that any built form that exists or is approved on a major street is not to be considered to the interior of the neighborhood. So in my respectful submission, there's no risk that this will be precedent-setting for anything that's related to any applications that, that would occur in the interior of the neighborhood. And I just do like to stress that this is on a major street, also on an avenue that's intended to be urbanized now. The city will be providing zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments that will flow from the avenue's designation on map two. And therefore, what is being proposed is more in line with what we could expect to see from potential future zoning bylaw amendments. And in fact, with the major streets bylaw, even though it's not applicable to the subject site, because it is within the MTSA, the major streets bylaw, and because Eglington Avenue East is a major street, has permitted that apartment buildings and townhouses can be a three-meter front yard setback. And this is obviously to recognize the relationship between a built form and something that, and a development that would be situated on a major street. With respect to inappropriate description in the public hearing notice, this, this has been provided by staff. We did not draft that. It was submitted under a zoning waiver. The purpose of the application is not something that's submitted under a waiver. So this is something, again, that's provided by staff according to their description. In, in respect to the variances, despite it being submitted as a waiver, pursuant to the revised plans that were submitted to the zoning examiner, we did receive a zoning notice on Monday, March 5th, or sorry, on Monday, March 3rd there, to confirm that the waiver that was submitted has the correct variances. Obviously, this wasn't done at the outset, because we were in discussions with urban forestry and community planning. And so therefore, we finally had the zoning notice provided to us to confirm the variances that are before you under waiver. Yes, with respect to the consistency of the building setbacks, there is a consistent six- to seven-meter building setback along this stretch of Eglington Avenue East. But again, I'd like to mention that these front yards provide for six to seven meters for front yard parking and driveways. These front yard parking and driveways that exist on this stretch on the north side are in fact not permitted under the current zoning bylaw. So all these properties, even though they're lawfully non-complying with the bylaw, should any development application come in, in the future for any properties to the east of Ramsay Road, would not be permitted to have front yard parking and driveway spaces. And on top of that, when we're talking about safety and risk, it was my respectful submission that there is a, yes, the building does project further out from the other buildings. However, I, in my respectful submission, having front driveways and parking pads backing out onto Eglington Avenue East along this entire block is more of a safety risk to the bus traffic and the future bike traffic and vehicular traffic than what is being proposed here. Again, measuring the point of the building to the five-meter-wide boulevard, that is six meters at the point of the sidewalk, and then even a seven-point, I think, one, two-meter length to the corner still provides effective corner rounding sightlines, of which the city of transportation, transportation services standards are for six meters, so we're increased above and beyond that. And I think those are my submissions in response to Mr. Cutel's comments, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Questions? Yes, Mr. Kibou.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes, sir. You denied the neighbor's submissions that this application would be precedent-setting. Can you point to any other properties around the area with similar, with similar nature?
So in fact, sir, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the question. In fact, if you, I don't have a map that shows it, but the northwest corner of Ramsay and Eglington, the southwest corner of Ramsay and Eglington, and the building at 267 Ramsay Road, that being at the southeast corner of Ramsay and Eglington, have a side yard to Main Street relationship. In that location map, actually, it can be seen. And measuring those properties with their side walls along Eglington Avenue East, they're, 267, it's about a two-meter setback from, from the property line along Eglington. A 272, it's a one-meter setback. A 274, the, the outcrop is a point. A two seven four, the, the outcrop is a point nine eight meter setback to Eglington Avenue. So, there certainly is the built form that is built closer to the property line than what is proposed. Even though it's not the front main wall of the building, those would be the side main walls, and they would also represent a greater building length, main wall length that's facing Eglington along this stretch as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chen. Thank you, Mr. Cattell. Let's take this matter into committee for a brief discussion.
Well, sorry if I make speak to the...
Hold on, hold on. Sorry, Mr. Chen, we're in committee, I, I can't have any more discussion. Mr. Kniffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Get us started.
I, this is a difficult application, and, and I, I do not envy the applicant. He's cooperating with the city to save a landmark tree, which I think is, is an interesting and commendable position to take. And by virtue of that, he has had to slide his already-designed building further to the south to reduce the front yard setback. He worked positively and constructively with the planning department to increase the front yard setback from, I think it was three point eight meters, I think, to five meters now, which is his proposal, in, in response to planning's objectives for sightlines and, and other matters. The, the point that was made by the lease side association is correct. He could make the building shorter, but as we've heard, that's going to reduce the amount of affordable rental housing for, in a particular size, a three, three-unit bedroom, a three-bedroom unit, which the city is very anxious to promote. It seems that no matter what is selected, there's going to be a downside. And of the downsides, I think the, the reduction in the front yard setback is the least of the problems, in my view. I note as well that the transportation department has not, in fact, raised any objections or concerns. And I will commend Mr. Chen for his comment about front yard parking. It's something I hadn't thought of, and I think he's quite right, that front yards full of parked cars are an obstruction as well. So, that I think that, all things considered, this is a reasonable alternative, and I'd be prepared to support it as revised by, or suggested revisions by planning department.
Okay, thank you. I, I struggle with this one as well. It's a, it's a tough file. I think where I get hung up is that, you know, I look at the floor plans, and I, I don't think, I don't take Mr. Chen's submission that this is going to be reduced from a three-bedroom unit to a two-bedroom unit. I think we're not dealing with an existing building. We're not dealing with taking a bedroom and cutting it in half. It's essentially requiring that the entire floor plan just essentially be shifted back as it was shifted forward. I, I look at the common area at the back, and I'm, you know, I'm looking at a room that's almost fifteen feet wide at one side, over twenty feet wide, but on another side, with the inclusion of a den by twen, like, it's a very big common space. I think that could easily, I just in proportion to the bedroom sizes, I think could easily be reduced and still provide good family-sized units, eleven hundred fifty-three square feet. We look at condominiums are certainly easily, can easily accommodate a three-bedroom unit. Usually, we see that at penthouse levels. But I think this, I, I think that could have been a little more accommodating. I'm also have concern with the fact that there hasn't, I mean, aside from shifting the building forward, I think that there was an opportunity to address some of the impact with respect to massing. I'll just point out, and this comes up a lot, with respect to the egress on the front of the building, if you look at the front elevation, that space over the landing of the stair is a story and a half. There's absolutely no reason that that front main wall could have been mitigated via an angular plane to reduce the impact of the front yard setback. So, I, it's, it's challenging in that regard. I, I think there's a, an opportunity for some relief from a front yard setback. I do, I think Mr. Cattell's comments are, are well-made, that, you know, this is something that, you know, could have been done via, through the design stage. I'm not sure that it was just enough to say, "Well, we can't build back, so let's just shift the whole building forward," and, you know. So, I, I struggle in that regard. Do other members have any comment, or, yes, Ms. Sankar?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I happen to agree with you. I mean, listening to this application and hearing what Mr. Cattell had had to say, I was on par of thinking the same thing. And I think that while they tried to appease certain, you know, concerns that were raised by the city, I think, you know, there's a way that you could have sensitively built this and still met the requirements. And I don't see how this fits in really with the character of the neighborhood and without that proof. And the fact that I don't see this as minor at all, I, I don't think I can move forward with an approval of this application. That's my view.
Is that a motion? Mr. Bartolo, did you have any?
I can toss my two cents into the ring. So, I'm sympathetic towards the applicant. He doesn't want to be here for this issue. So, he's kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. If he pushes the building back, then the tree has to...
Mr. Bartolo, can I just get you to speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
How's that?
That's there.
Okay. So, I said I'm sympathetic towards the applicant because he's caught between a rock and a hard place on this one. If he, if the, the tree didn't exist, or he was able to push the building back, then this would be a non-issue, and he wouldn't be here today, right? But in trying to preserve that tree, he gets sucked into this situation where now he has front yard setback issues, right? So, and this is already previously approved, and I'm not here to kind of just rule out something that's recently approved in the area. And I agree with the need for, you know, good-sized three-bedroom units, which is a rarity in the city. So, on balance, I would agree with Mr. Nimfelt on this application.
All right. I don't know, we, maybe we're ready for a motion. We'll see how, we've got one colleague. If you'd like to provide comment, or we can...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think I listened to the parties very carefully. I, I really was very sympathetic with the, the concern from the neighbors. But overall, I still believe the, the plan could be modified. But at, at this point, as the, the neighbors said, will be back to sending back, it back to the architect, which may take them more time to do it. And I'm not in the opinion that this committee is here to slow the process more than it is necessary. So, I would be of the opinion that maybe the, the applicant should be given an opportunity to, to have this application proceed, and maybe we may make some changes to the, to the final decision. But I'm, I'm more than happy to make a motion for us to approve this application with modifications. I don't have all the modifications here, but I think we can have it work.
When you, you say modifications, are you talking about a modified variance?
Yeah, the variance.
But you don't know specifically what?
Yeah, because the front yard, I see they've made, I won't say substantial, substantial changes, but they've made a change which makes it a little bit from three point eight to five meters, which is quite considerate. And so, at least based on that, I'm more than willing to, 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 to approve this, to move, put a forward a motion to approve this application.
Okay, so you are in favor then of the application as modified?
Yeah, as modified.
You wouldn't be looking to make any further modifications?
Just unless another colleague has, I want, I'm not willing to make further modifications.
I'll look to my colleagues. I, as chair, I, I would perhaps like to allow my colleagues to bring a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Kibou was going to bring a motion. I just wanted to make one comment. I have reservations with the proposal, what I did back when we approved it. We discussed it and in, on balance, we decided it had merit and it was approved. I don't think now is the time to determine that the building doesn't fit into the community. That's, I, as far as I'm concerned, that's an issue that was already covered in the previous decision. I think what we're dealing with here, as Mr. Bartolo said quite clearly, is something that the applicant doesn't want to be here for. He's been, he's been asked to accommodate the preservation of a tree in the backyard. And the comments we've got from, from forestry are really quite deliberate. "We will not give you permission to take the tree down no matter what." So, that's a given. And you're quite right, he's moved the building to the south. His position is that it's to preserve the size of the units that he's proposed. And I, I take him at, at his word. But I would just caution, I don't think we should be going back and reevaluating whether this is a good, good building. That's not what's before us. What's before us is the issue of the setback.
Can I just say something?
Of course.
While that might be agreeable, I just also think that that's a matter of life, that things happen like this, where maybe forestry or others will pu, put in, you know, chinks along the way, and you redesign accordingly. And, you know, that tree does serve a purpose, and I understand why forestry is doing what they're doing. In fact, I applaud them for that. But I just think in the light that this is, now, we might have approved this before, given that design, but now that there's something else that's interjecting, to me, you can redesign in accordance with that new concern that arises, and do that in a sensitive way. And I think you have the ability to do that. So, I don't feel like I should be, you know, helping someone redesign or walk around things when I've got other, you know, parts of the city, you know, saying, "Here's what the concern is." And I'm going out of my way to sort of help that when there's really strong testimony from the neighborhood association, which I, I take to heart. So, I just wanted to share that. I'm still of the opinion, I can't approve this.
Okay. I, I might also acknowledge just the, the, it's not, forestry's not asking for, it's not a requirement of the front yard setback that forestry is seeking. They're just asking for a reduction of the rear. The solution that the applicant's bringing forward is to build, or essentially move the building to the front yard setback. And I, I think that's important to make, because I think the purpose of the application could have been better worded to Mr. Cattell's observation. But I think we've had enough discussion on this. Maybe one of our members can bring a motion, and we see where it goes. Yes, Mr. Kibou?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the modifications suggested by the, the city planners, the planning.
Okay, just to confirm with reduction of the front yard setback to five meters? As amended?
Yes, as amended.
As amended by, okay?
Yes, Mr. Nimfelt, condition regarding the forest trees or the forest conditions, yes.
Yeah, two and three. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Okay, Mr. Allison and Ms. Sankar. Okay, the motion carries, application is proved. Okay. We are on to item number eight. Thirty-one Marrowan Drive. Purpose of the application is to construct a new multi-unit dwelling, specifically a fourplex. We've got five variances before us. Number of platforms permitted for one unit on a front main wall. Building height, side main wall height, number of platforms for one unit permitted on a rear main wall, and west side yard setback. On file material from the applicant, letter of concern from the counselor, Counselor Carroll, letter of concern from Mr. Desmond Fund, Rishi Punwani, Bonnie Wilkinson, Don and Linda McCrossin, Jin Tang, and some other residents on Kingland Crescent, as well as number ten, sixteen, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-three, forty-eight, Clearville Crescent, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, twenty-nine, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-seven, forty-five, seventy, Marrowan Drive, number one, ten, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, forty-seven, Clovercrest Road, fifty-seven, Kingland Crescent, seven, Spindlewood Drive, four, Trail Slide Drive, and forty-five, Long Hope Place, among others, I should say. Hopefully, that encapsulates the letters of concern. Okay, we've got our agent with us in person. Welcome.
Good morning, committee. Jonathan Biskowski, three zero one Kiwatin Avenue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Biskowski. Last word presentation from you.
Absolutely. First, I'd like to start off by thanking a couple of the neighbors that I, I've engaged with. One, really spent hours with a neighbor to the rear, kind of going back and forth, as well as, as one of the neighbors here that I've spoken to a couple of times, just kind of, again, reviewing the application, hopefully to be able to arrive at an application that works for both the neighbors as well as my client, in terms of the built form and the massing for the fourplex. In fact, as of midnight and nine AM this morning, we were still going back and forth with some changes. And, and I will possibly, in my rebuttal, go through some recommended conditions that I would request if this were to be approved, that I have reviewed with one of the neighbors. But again, I would probably leave that into my rebuttal. We have made some substantial changes to the application. Maybe to review those first as per the public notice. Variance number two has been removed, which is the request for two platforms in the rear yard. Variance number three has been reduced to ten meters. And I'm going to come back and, and maybe address that separately with how the wording is and how that relates to the main wall height itself. Variance number four has been removed. And variance number five has been increased to one point six meters. So, essentially, the request that is before you today is for one, sorry, for two platforms as it faces Marrowan, a ten-meter side main wall height where seventy percent is permitted to be ten meters. We are proposing that one hundred percent. And I think it's important for us to remember that the seventy percent is permitted under the multiplex zoning bylaw, whereas we are proposing one hundred percent, and I, and I will come back to that after. And then the last request we have is for a, a reduction of a one point eight-meter required side yard setback to one point six meter. I would note that the, the opposite side yard setback is generous at two point nine seven meters. So, a little bit of mitigation, when we look at that accumulation of the two side yards and how it fits with the one point eight point, plus one point eight gives us the three point six, we are considerably above that. Could we, if we could bring up my presentation materials while I kind of give a quick little opening. Similar to the previous application, this property is located within the Leslie Station MTSA, which again, sets out minimum density targets. The property is located essentially seven hundred meters or approximately a ten-minute walk from Leslie Station itself. Going back to, again, how this relates to the side main wall height, because I think we're going to hear a fair amount about the massing of that side main wall height and how that relates to the adjacent neighbors. And I don't think I'm going to get through everything now, so hopefully I can get through some of this in my rebuttal. Again, the requirement is not for a seven-and-a-half-meter main wall height. The requirement permits seventy percent of that side main wall height to be at ten meters. We've mitigated that where we have the reduction in the side yard setback. We've mitigated that where we have the reduction in the side yard setback by setting back a portion of the third floor to be two foot further, again, in excess of that actual one point six meters side yard we're proposing, plus another two, brings us to about two point two again, which is in excess of the zoning bylaw requirement. The dwelling itself is also proposed below the seventeen meters, which also helps to mitigate the impact to the adjacent neighbors. Again, that side main wall height does not specify where that seventy percent has to be. The dwelling could be a little bit deeper with that mass pushed towards the rear, with the reduction in the side main wall height being towards the front. There is no specific portion where it says that has to be allocated itself. On the screen here, I, I brought up OPA Amendment six forty-nine, which permits multiplex, sorry, which permits the multiplexes in neighborhoods. Within this, this OPA amendment, we have SASP eight twenty-six. It is the policies of SASP eight twenty-six that we are to evaluate whether a multiplex fits in within a neighborhood. Policy four point one point five, the neighborhood policies, speaks to prevailing, prevailing, prevailing. To speak to a saying of, you know, you can be the first one at the party as long as you're invited to the party. So previously, this would not be a built form that exists within the neighborhood because it wouldn't have been permitted. So it's very tough to evaluate the proposal under four point one point five. If we go into chapter five of the official plan, it actually speaks to where there's a conflict between a specific policy and there is a SASP that is in place, the SASP takes precedent. Because again, you can't go into what prevails in a neighborhood that doesn't exist. So again, to be invited to the party, to be, but to be the first one there is okay, but you still have to be invited to that party. So it's speaking to the opening language of the SASP itself, and I'm, I'm going to absolutely run out of time before I really get into anything. It really speaks that these low-rise residential buildings will have a different built form to what is in the neighborhood itself. And that goes back to what I spoke of. Again, it's not fitting in with what's there, it's fitting in within these SASP policies. And, and very quickly, to review the SASP policies, again, I'm, I'm not going to have time to go through it all. Basically, they speak to things like the prevailing setbacks from the street, we are in keeping with that. In terms of maximizing the contiguous soft landscaping, we have no request for a front yard reduction of landscaping or a rear yard reduction in landscaping. Continuing on, it's encouraged to include large units. All four of the units we are proposing are three-bedroom units. They are family-style units, again, that each offer four-bedroom units. Continuing on the policy will provide entrances that are safely accessible from the street, which may, may be located at the front, side, and the rear. We have one locate, one entrance at the front, two at the side, and one at the rear. Continuing on, should not result in an injury or removal of a healthy tree. We did submit an arborist report. There is one tree that is proposed to be removed, which is in the front where the proposed foundation is to be. Regardless of this being a multiplex or a single-family dwelling sighted in this location, that tree would require to be removed, again, just because of the existing location of it.
Mr. Bencowski, I just, I know we are over time. I realize there's a lot to cover. I'm hoping we might be able to cover with some questions?
Yes, okay, okay.
If that's all right. I, I want to ensure that we view full clarification of, of this matter.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna, you know what, I will, I'll, gonna give you an extra minute?
That's fantastic. I can kind of, I can kind of give you a quick summary, I think, in this last minute. Again, I would like to conclude by addressing the impacts of the variances that are before you. In my opinion, the impact of the variances that are before you today really do not reflect the built form of what would be permitted as of right. Meaning, what would be permitted as of right will be an additional twenty centimeters to move that from one point six to one point eight meters, as well as shifting. Again, remember that side main wall height does not specify where that seventy percent could be. It can be towards the rear, it can be towards the front. The dwelling we know can be about point four meters deeper with that massing towards the rear. So the as-of-right zoning bylaw permission to what I have before you today, I believe does not create any additional adverse impact to what is being proposed. I, I think it's very similar. Again, as the overall height is permitted, it's really a side main wall height in addition to the two balconies that face Mary, I mean, I butcher that every time I say it, Mary, Mary Woon Street, whereas we have removed the one at the rear.
Okay.
Thank you, Committee.
Thank you. I, I actually had a, it's could be perhaps a follow-up question. With respect to the side main wall height, because I think of all the variances, especially with the modifications, probably from a quantitative standpoint stands out the most. I, I do, I'd acknowledge your point that, you know, seventy percent is permitted at ten meters. We've had a lot of discussion of multiplexes in this committee over the last few months and I, I guess my, my question to you with respect to the side main wall height. You know, if, if there was, you know, if this was proposed as an as-of-right, right? In terms of the, what would the bylaw expect of you in terms of, you know, a, a reduction? Where would we see that reduction on the building? Because they're, they're still asking for thirty percent to be, to not exceed that height, right? Where, where could that be put into the design and, and, and is it, is it really material to the, to, to essentially creating a multiplex? Like, is it, is it, is the bylaw missing something?
I, I feel like Mr. Chan previously stole a lot of my thunder. Yes, in a sense of, of the types of units that are proposed to be provided, being multi-level family-style units that are three bedrooms. So essentially, the seventy percent of what we're proposing gives us in and around a twelve-meter permission for that mass on the third floor. That would essentially remove the depth of those, the, the three-bedroom units on the third floor. Now, if we could go to, yes, if we could bring up one of the side elevations, please, and I'm, I'm looking at the further screen when I have one right here. We could just continue on. I believe we have an updated one where the third floor has been recessed. It, it has some revision clouds. No, I, I believe it's on the opposite side. It's actually the west elevation. But we, I mean, we could leave that up. Essentially, what it would mean is in order to achieve that seventy percent, we could, and, and remember, Mr. Chair, that ten meters is permitted. The request isn't to go over a ten-meter side main wall height. It's the percentage that we're occupying of it. So of that, of that one hundred percent, we're permitted essentially seventy percent to be there. That seventy percent could be at the front, meaning that main wall height could be recessed slightly at the front. That main wall height could be recessed slightly at the rear. It could be entirely located at the front. So to go back to that impact of how it would relate to the two adjacent neighbors. Again, with the as-of-right, that could be appropriated at the rear of the house, which really would not change the impact to the adjacent neighbors. You would, you would have the reduction at the front along the streetscape, but again, with the compliant overall ten-meter height, that, that ratio starts to, to pinch the building in at the front and the rear. And again, would, would essentially not permit us to have three-bedroom units up there.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to understand, you know, you have a, you've got, the bylaw is essentially asking for just a percentage, just not a lot, thirty percent. And you're asking for a hundred percent. I'm trying to understand what the difference of that thirty percent essentially creates in terms of massing manifest, or how does that manifest itself? And, and whether or not that actually is essentially, can, is the bylaw falling short? You know, to be able to provide applicants like yourself the opportunity to come forward with a, with a, with a functional multiplex building, or is it, is it, is it falling short?
I, I think there's two parts to that question, Mr. Chair. I, I think one, it depends largely on the type of units you would like to provide. If you would like to provide that larger family-style unit where we're in an established neighborhood, it, it's tough in that instance, and that's why we go back to those SASP policies that don't go back to prevailing, you know, prevailing size, location, all of these FSI numbers that we look at, because the multiplex is a different built form. It, it's going to affect neighbors. It's going to have impact just because it's a new built form. What we need to look at is what that impact means towards those adjacent neighbors. And how that impact relates to the individual to the east and the individual to the west, right? And then go back and say, okay, if this were to be an as-of-right permission, because again, an as-of-right is essentially an, is an acceptable impact. So if you have that as-of-right permission, whether you're at ten meters or fifteen meters, right, you're, you're an acceptable impact as per the zoning bylaw itself. So going back to where to appropriate that ten meters, we have, and again, I, I'm not sure if we can find it. We, we've submitted probably four different proposals in the last.
I'd like to see that side elevation. I, I heard you mention it, but I was, must have been looking at the wrong elevation.
Oh, yes, it's in, it's in here. It's in here. It's in this, it's in this. So, so also, if approved, this would be the set of plans that is reflective of the variances I spoke of at the beginning of mine.
I want to scroll through those and make sure everybody's on the same page, looking at the same drawings.
Yeah, if we find the west elevation. It's going, we gotta go the other way. Again, that's reflective of what I, what I addressed at the, at the beginning here. We just stop here for one sec. We can see there, the, the, the set-in portion that faces the reduction of the side yard, okay? And then if we continue on, I mean, we're going to look at it in a flat elevation, so it's, you're really just going to see a couple of lines with, with a revision cloud. That's it there.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that portion has been set in an additional two feet.
All right.
As well as we can see the elimination of the, also of the balcony at the rear. Now, now, I, I still have more to answer if, if you'd like, Mr. Chair, to your question.
Well, let's, I, I suspect we're going to get into some more fulsome discussion over this, given the amount of people here to speak.
Okay.
So I, unless my colleagues have any questions at this time? No? Okay. Let's, let's turn it over to some other speakers. We are definitely going to come back to you, Mr. Bencowski. Yeah, actually, Mr. Bencowski, just a matter of clarification. So the drawing up on the screen is the most recent elevation?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and also that reflects the increase in the side yard, the elimination of the balconies, as well as that being set in with, with the, the fulsome list of revised variances that we reviewed.
Okay.
It's all within that one email.
It's the bubbled portion that reflects the one point six meters, or that's?
The entirety of the dwelling is now at one point six meters. The bubbled portion is an additional point six that is set in.
Okay, so we're looking at two point four meters on that third section. Okay, very good.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we've got some people here to speak to this item. Yes, please come down. Tell us your name, address.
Yep. Good morning. My name's Krista Oliver, and I'm the owner of thirty-seven Merwin Drive. And I'm a member of the Merwin Clovercrest Community Group. I wanted to speak today because it seemed like this was the only opportunity for the public to speak for this entire process. As Mr. Bencowski mentioned, this is a new built form. It's the first incidence of a fourplex under the new MTSA rezoning. Certainly a shock to the system of the neighborhood that I've been occupying since nineteen seventy. The neighbors do feel that this is an unacceptable impact to the neighborhood. We have been working with, and I think this is who Mr. Bencowski was referring to, we have an individual on our very street who is a licensed architect, Frank Wang. And most of the neighbors and myself are in agreement and alignment with Frank's position. So I'm not going to speak to the details of the requested variance. I'm going to refer to Frank for that, as I'm a layperson and can't speak to that. But I did want to voice my and my community's support for Frank's opinions. And just further to some of the specifics, variance relief that is requested, some of the concerns that the neighbors have had is traffic, character of the neighborhood, concerns about the parking-looking substandard for maneuverability of four cars, also a material on the parking pad being nonporous, is there going to be flooding of the neighbors' yards, concerned about privacy with balconies. If trees are removed, are fences going to be built? And also concerned about foot traffic with the rear entrance to the building. Anyway, as I said, I'm a layperson and I can't answer the details. I will refer to Frank, who's on the phone, but wanted to just appear to the committee in person to voice some of the concerns of the immediate and long-term neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions at this time? Okay. Typically, we hear from members in person, then we will go online. But perhaps it might be helpful if we hear from Mr. Wang?
I believe it would be.
All right. Staff, we have Mr. Wang available.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the committee, committee members. As my neighbor has introduced me, my name is Frank Wang. I'm a resident of thirty Clovercrest Row. My property is not directly backing onto the backyard of thirty-one Merwin, but is one property to the west. So my northeast corner of my backyard touches the southwest corner of Merwin. As mentioned, I am an architect. And I have focused my career on developing high-density mixed-use residential projects for more than twenty years. Given my kind of unique combination as both neighbor and having somebody with a kind of bit of expertise in the subject matter, I would ask the committee, committee to give me perhaps a few extra minutes to go through some of the content.
I'm going to just interject to staff, to stop the clock so we can address the matter of time. I'm happy to afford some extra time. However, I, I'm gonna ask, we, we do have a number of residents.
Absolutely.
And, and if, if we do afford you some extra time, perhaps we can just be mindful, some of the other people.
Yep.
Will just, we won't take as much time with some of the other speakers then. All right?
I'll, I'll go as quick as I can.
All right.
So for the record, I am, I am in favor of intensification in a responsible manner, would carefully consider design. While I understand that this hearing is limited to variance items, I would like to share the following design concerns. Fundamentally, my biggest issue with the proposed design is the way the units are split, split. I would encourage the applicant to reconsider the appropriateness of locating three of the four unit entry doors at the side yard and backyard. I have strong safety concerns as the location of the entry door would essentially allow public access to walk around the entire subject property adjacent to all the neighboring backyards. The current design proposed two of the four units with main living area windows facing the backyard. This is a, a major missed design opportunity that creates both privacy overlooking concern, issues to the neighbor and while creating poor view conditions for future residents of these two units looking at surface parking. The current design shows parking in the backyard with substandard parking drive aisle width, substandard parking space dimension, and insufficient vehicle maneuvering space as required by city's design standard, which are unacceptable. It is my understanding that multiplex has zero parking requirement. But if the applicant choose to provide onsite parking, there is no specific section in the zoning bylaw to conform to. This is a loophole that the city needs to address. While there is no specific bylaw to conform to, I believe it should follow city standard for parking spaces and to demonstrate the drive aisle width and vehicle maneuvering is safe and appropriate. This rationale is based on the fact that these multiplex development has the potential to become condominiumized with multiple owners. And therefore, it should, the design should meet minimum city standard, no different than any other larger-scale development. The intent of creating a five-point-one-A driveway with fronting Merwin that reduced to now two point nine seven in the front yard is puzzling. It appears that the five-point-one-A width would allow another substandard parking space in the front yard, which would bring the total proposed onsite parking to five substandard parking spaces. To be honest, I have mixed feelings about the parking issue. As a neighbor, I absolutely don't like the backyard surface parking. As a designer, I understand the need for likely minimum three parking spaces to, in support of four three-bedroom unit development. If all part onsite parkings are eliminated, instead of attracting four families to this development, we will likely end up with twelve individual tenants that doesn't have cars, which is something that I don't prefer to see either. And I struggle with how to find appropriate balance between the two. My recommendation is at least provide appropriate high fencing planting in the backyard to protect the privacy of the neighbors. While I understand the design is currently not required, certain detailed design not currently required. The current design does not show sufficient details to ensure stormwater runoff is. uh, the current design does not show sufficient details to ensure stormwater runoff is contained onsite. My recommendation is to propose permeable pavers and provide proper curbs between hard, soft surface and soft surface. There are no designated walkway proposed separating pedestrian vehicular traffic on the west side yard. Not ideal for the two, uh, units fronting to walk out directly onto vehicular traffic. Design should further consider allowance for appropriate space required for snow storage repair area, outdoor mechanical units, and, uh, number of, uh, waste bins. The design should, uh, uh, further, uh, consider appropriate screening for mechanical units. So those are my design concerns, and as for variance item, uh, first, I want to commend the applicant on the modifications to the original variance along with the revised drawings. I think the applicant made a sincere effort in addressing at least my concerns regarding the CFA items, and I'll go through them quickly one by one. Number one, I don't have any objections, uh, it's in the front yard. Number two, I, uh, I'm glad to see it, uh, removed. Uh, I think the permitted ten meters is sufficient. Number four, it's also removed, and I'm glad the, the applicant agrees to remove it, uh, for, uh, you know, um, kinda in, in, in the concern of the neighboring of privacy. In terms of item number three and item number five, I'm gonna talk, uh, about them, uh, kinda in combination. My, uh, original concern has more to do with the west, uh, um, side yards. Because the, the two, um, variance combined creates bigger bill form, and then it's, it's asking to move closer, so it seriously negatively impacts the twenty-nine Maryland neighbor. So, but, so, item number three, the original variance asked for from seven-point-five meters to ten-point-four, and then now it's reduced to ten meters, and increased the length of the wall from seventy to a hundred, which I would, uh, oppose. With the latest plan, the way that the third floor is recessed, there's about, uh, forty-six percent of the wall is now recessed additional two feet. If I was to draw, uh, come up with a rationale, typically speaking, we would do the permitted seven-point-five, uh, uh, meter height from the property line up, and then, and then provide a forty-five, uh, degree angular plane. And in this instance, the recessed portion, forty-six percent of the portion, would essentially clip that view, uh, view plane by a hundred millimeter, four inches. So in that instance, I feel like it's okay.
Just gonna ask you to wrap it up, Mr. Wang? We may have questions as well for you.
Yep. Perhaps I can, okay, so, so I think item number three is, uh, okay for me. Item number five, the original ask is one-point-two-two, uh, they made, I think, a sincere effort to move it to one-point-five and then one-point-six now, which I think is acceptable. So in conclusion, I have no objections to the modified variance, uh, items provided, if it's tied to the revised site plan, level-three plan, and the west elevations. However, since small project like this is not required to go through site plan approval process, and there are no enforceable bylaw to address, uh, some of the other concerns, I will ask the committee to, uh, if the committee is to rule in favor of the applicant to, uh, include the following nine conditions, and I've sent an email, uh, earlier this morning, uh, so that these conditions are, have been submitted, uh, via email. Number one, O-HAR service.
Hold on, I could have to cut you off there, uh, just because we're way over on the time. I've been very generous with that. Just also mindful that, eh, eh, you're speaking on behalf of, I, I, I understand multiple, uh, people that have, uh, registered with concern. There's, just so I understand, there is a, uh, a sort of, eh, list that was negotiated, I presume? And I'm, I'm gonna ask the agent as well.
It was, uh, discussed, yes.
Okay.
To myself and Mr. Brancos, Brancowski.
Okay, um. Before we get to that, uh, based on, uh, your comments, do we have any questions?
Mr. Chair, can I, given, um, the weight that may be put on this, uh, presentation by the neighbors as well, I don't know if you wanted to say a couple of words about managing expectations, about the committee's role in terms of design?
Yep.
Uh, which you don't have jurisdiction to comment on. What's before you is, are the variances?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, just to the comment from our deputy secretary treasurer, uh, I, we're, we're really not in the position to be, uh, enforcing, uh, or, or putting in private agreements, uh, into any approvals. It, it puts us in a really difficult, uh, situation, uh, when these things are, are kind of asked, uh, to be included as part of, uh, minor variance approvals. All, all we really, uh, are dealing with are the variances before us. That said, I, I'm glad to see that there is discussion between, uh, the neighbors and the agent. I, I hope that any sort of, uh, you know, private discussions that are had, uh, are still able, they're still able to be facilitated, perhaps though it would be more in good faith. But, but the committee itself is not in a position to, uh, enforce, uh, private, uh, private matters. If there's something specific to the variances, um, I, I will, uh, give an opportunity to, uh, let us know. But otherwise, uh, we just won't be able to, uh, be enforcing private conditions. Is that, do, do you understand, Mr. Wang?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, and, and I think, uh, um, I, I apologize, uh, that, um, the e- email to, of the list of conditions, uh, was sent, uh, early this morning, and perhaps you, um, you know, the panels don't have, uh, uh, the, the list, but, uh, I think, uh, a lot of the lists are enforceable, and, and, uh, some, some of them are asked to be, uh, uh, to ensure that, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna be reviewed, uh, at the building permit approval stage.
Of course, yes, as, as, as a lot of these matters are. I presume also Mr. Bencowski will probably, uh, speak to some of that matter. I, I see his head shaking. So, um, if it's alright with you, um, we're prepared to move on to the next, uh, individual, and, uh, perhaps we can get a little bit more clarification on, uh, some of the things that were discussed, uh, in, in Mr. Bencowski's response to us.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wang. Alright, we have some other speakers, uh, in person. Yes, please come down. Now, I, I did, I was, uh, a little lenient with Mr. Wang. I did give him an extra two and a half minutes, so.
No, understood.
Just be mindful about, uh, just repeating anything that was already said. Your name and address, sir?
Uh, Jelko Romich, thirty-three Maryland Drive. I am the immediate neighbor to the east.
Okay, yep.
So, um, I, I think it's important to note that basically, the reason we spoke about conditions in design is, uh, is a mitigation, uh, feature of some of the variances. So, we understand that the bylaws were amended recently to allow fourplexes in our neighborhood. That is a new thing, but the, the heights and the setbacks were adjusted accordingly to allow for that. So we understand that. It just going beyond even that and stretching it to the max, and then still not really being able to fit standard-sized parking, things like that, is a concern because we don't see where, you know, the garbage cans will fit. We don't see where the snow removal will go, and as the immediate neighbor, you know, is that, is that gonna go on my property, things like that? With regards to the height, so I understand that the, uh, the main wall height permitted, seven and a half meters for seventy percent. Uh, they're, they wanna go up to ten. To me, that is not minor, because as the immediate neighbor, that does have implications. Uh, we use our backyard for leisure activities, small children, children play there, so there is the loss of privacy. Previously, that was mitigated because the previous neighbor was, uh, a house like ours. This will be almost three times the size of our house, and per, like, completely paved. So the concerns with runoff and things like that, uh, where does that go? There used to be a line of trees between the two properties. The tree, the Arbus report, we noted, does not at all include pictures of the backyard, um, as it should, according to the checklist. This was, uh, there was a written submission by Bonnie Wilkinson, my spouse, in relation to that, so we did provide pictures of what the existing canopy looks like. There are some significant trees, uh, maybe not protected, but they do provide the mitigation to additional height as well as just, uh, absorbing some of the runoff and things like that. So I think this is the reason that we suggest that if additional height is being considered, that, you know, some conditions requiring mitigation be, uh, considered.
Okay. Just if, if I understand correctly, um, there's a, there's some concern that did come up with respect to the parking and the paving that would be required as a result of that. I'll be honest, I, I have concerns with that as well, but that, that variance is not before us today. It's, i- if it's an as of right, it's something that's out of our control, but I, I, uh, you know, I trust that the applicant, having been, been, or the agent and applicant being aware of, of such concerns, uh, you know, we hope that they'd be able to address them in one way or another. Certainly, the amount of hardscaping in the back, uh, alongside with the parking, uh, may create some sort of drainage issues, but a lot of those matters can be addressed at the building application, uh, stage.
Right, and we do appreciate that the, uh, since the, the planner has been hired, uh, there's been some positive changes. It's just, we were never at all approached by the actual developer. So we could have shared these concerns directly to them, but this was our first opportunity.
Well, you know, that's, is, eh, eh, in a way, this process kinda helps for those discussions to happen early on, such that, you know, maybe some things that aren't necessarily related to the variance are at least on their radar, and they can address them earlier on. And also just to sage some of the concerns from the neighbors, because at the end of the day, when all said and done, you guys are still gonna be neighbors, and, you know, you wanna maintain a good, good relationship. But there was also, uh, some concern in addition to the parking and the, the paving at the rear, you said with respect to the, the massing in the height. Could you just clarify, uh, eh, sort of in, in relationship to your property? Because if I understand correctly, y- you guys are being afforded the larger side yard setback, uh, which is.
Uh, because, yeah, the, the driveway essentially will be our setback.
On your side, yeah. Well, fair enough, yeah, so there's impact from that. But in terms of the height specifically, is there something specific, uh, with respect to the, the plan, design, uh, the variance that, uh?
Well, I mean.
Concern, or just overall, you'd like to see that thirty percent?
It's a, you know, eh, eh, it was built according to what's currently allowed. There are impacts from that, but we understand there are. Uh, it just, it's additional impacts on top of what's already allowed. And just the cumulative impacts of all those changes.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a significant loss of enjoyment of property that, you know, we could argue.
Yeah, okay. Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask my colleagues if there's any other questions. Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, uh, there's some other neighbors as well, uh, I'd like to hear from. Yes, sir, please come on down.
My name is Mason Han, uh, thirty-four Maryland Drive. After review, the renewed sheperdistic secondary plan, I have three concern about the, uh, proposal, proposal misalignment with the, the plan. First one, according to the secondary plan, Maryland Drive follow within the neighborhood character area, means the developments must align with the low-distance residential policy of the official plan. But the proper design features a full ten-meter high across hundred percent side wall plus multiple plant floor, which is beyond limits of, uh, zoning bylaw. It's a result incompatible with the sec, with the surrounding streetscape and, uh, estebulistic character of this area. The second, second concern is, uh, map in the sector, in sector, in sector plan fifty-five-seven shows Maryland is a part of pedestrian and psycho network improvement planned as a bicycle that runs through the entire street. The plan prioritize the walk, walkability, means develops should support pedestrian-friendly strength scopes. This pa, this, uh, proposal involve four times, uh, vehicle and increasing vehicle crossing and driver traffic can contradicting this goals by re- reducing pedestrian safety. The last one is, Maryland is a close to parkland priority area, which increase the more green space. However, this develop increase landscape area, drive work, uh, parking lot, and makes, ma, maximize lot courage rather in cooperating setbacks and landscapeers. That's, uh, the plan call for. If the city aim to introduce four platforms on Maryland, I re, I recommend it first conduct pilot project in selected locations such as streets and, and intersections. Introduce a fourplex as, as selected case. It in the middle of Maryland would disrupt the well-estebulistic neighborhood and set as some precedent for future development, at least from secondary, sec, secondary plans division. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, alright, thank you very much. We have some additional speakers here in person. Okay, staff, you can, uh, go to our online speakers now.
To you, Mr. Chair. Among online, uh, speakers, I talked to Linda David, and she mentioned that she's not going to speak. I'm going to unmute Andrew, uh, Yang.
Alright.
Hello?
Hello?
There you go. Sorry about that, little bit of tech issues. As mentioned before, my name is Andrew Yang. I'm at twenty-four Clareville Crescent. And with regards to the densification of urban plans, um, this is more of a comment about, uh, the MTAs and everything else like that. Just addressing that issues that a lot of our neighborhood and a lot of our areas have supported diversification, when it makes sense, uh, one Maryland, Connaughts Long, Leslie, Don Mills, et cetera. The, uh, agent mentioned a very interesting analogy about a party. A party where, just because there hasn't been a party before, doesn't mean you can't be the first. The issue with that analogy, and kinda where I'm going with this, is that our streets on Maryland wasn't designed for this. So when you're looking at just the overall general vari- variance with the official plans, it's kind of hard to build a fourplex in that area, as kind of addressed. He even mentioned himself that to follow along with all the variances, there will be a sort of a pinching element that is there. So though I can't, though Frank has spoke a lot about the variances, about everything else like that, this is just more of a comment about when these fourplexes were designed, as mentioned by the board, that we're working through this right now. I think what we're seeing here is an example where these areas don't necessarily make sense for the fourplexes that are there, that are close by metro areas. So that's pretty much all I gotta say. I'll refer it back to the, to the board.
Alright, thank you. Questions? Okay, alright, let's move on to our next speaker.
To you, Mr. Chair, Utah Mangler is unmuted. She can speak.
Eric, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
Thank you, sir. I'm the immediate neighbor on 29 Marrowine. The impacted property is 31 Marrowine.
Just confirm your name for us.
Ut Paul is the first name, Mangler is the last name.
All right, thank you, and you're at 7 Anetta Circle, right?
That's my residence, correct.
All right, the floor is yours.
29 Marrowine is the immediate property, thank you. I just wanted to take 30 seconds and echo the comments that all the neighbors have provided. I'm obviously not an architect and not a landscaper, so do not have deep knowledge on a lot of the nuances, but as Mr. Wang said, the impact to 29 Marrowine is going to be significant, and I would like the committee here to consider that based on the feedback and comments that Mr. Wang provided. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, next speaker.
To you, Mr. Chair, we contacted Yoplin Liu, and we were not able to access her.
All right. I believe that concludes all of our speakers on this item. Okay, Mr. Bencowski, you're up.
All right, again, I'd like to say thank you to especially the two neighbors that I did have some fairly extensive conversations with, that led to these changes. I would also note, I did drop off letters in the adjacent properties to the east-west going, a couple of houses each, as well as across the street, which is, I think, what led to Mr. Wang calling me. Just to review a couple of things, the gentleman right behind me spoke about secondary plans and things like that. Whether it's a triplex or a fourplex, there's a new Ontario regulation that came out in October, sorry, the end of November, that permits three units province-wide with no FSI restrictions. What that does is that essentially overrides any policy of the City of Toronto. The day that that receives royal ascension through the province, it's in the Planning Act, it's done. So that, again, although we are proposing a fourplex, triplexes are province-wide permitted with, again, reduced performance standards, much like we see in the zoning bylaw amendment we see here. I'd also like to, just to speak to some of the other, the official plan policies, the role of the zoning bylaw is essentially to implement the official plan. What we have before you today is essentially a reduction of 0.2 meters for a side yard setback, again, with a generous 1.6 meters provided, and if we take that in relation also with the 1.8 meters that we see located to the east, we essentially have a 3.4 meter cumulative distance between those two dwellings to the west. To the east, as Mr. Chair spoke of, that is already a generous side yard setback, which has a covered carport where the Mr. Zelko does park a vehicle. I would say that that separation is a cumulative 9.88 meters, or 32 feet, essentially. Addressing the parking, parking was one of the things we did discuss from the beginning, and I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Wang, that there is nothing in the multiplexes that does address parking. What is addressed in that is landscaping. The proposal before you take does not request a rear yard landscaping variance. We are as per the zoning bylaw. There are minimums for drive aisles in residential application like this, but there is not a requirement for a maximum, as we would see in a mid-rise or a high-rise, being a two meter, sorry, being a six meter two-way drive aisle, that simply doesn't exist in a residential scale like this. In terms of the privacy, if we could bring up, maybe start with the side elevations, or we could go to the floor plans first, and one of the SaaS policies I didn't speak to does address privacy and overlook. As we see on the basement, if we could go to the second, the windows that face both the east and the west for the dwelling on the second and the third, if we could just go down one more, please. As we see here, we have two that face the west, which are both in the washrooms. There is no livable area that has a occupo, sorry, that has a window. If we could continue on to the third, please. We see the same on the third here, where, again, the only side windows are in the washrooms. I can appreciate that there's a concern from a rear window, but multiplex, single-family, duplex or triplex, there is nothing that regulates the amount of glass on the rear wall of a dwelling. That can be 100% regardless, there is no building code that controls that, there's no glazing limitation, that can be as large as one wishes, but again, I can appreciate that, and part of that was the addressing of removing one of the balconies at the rear, which we have taken off. Again, to speak to the idea of the entrances, I did review that SaaS policy that specifically says, once again, entrances should be located at the front, side, or the rear. We are proposing entrances at the front, side, and the rear. I did have some lengthy conversations with Mr. Wang about that idea of bringing the public realm into the rear. What I would say to that, it's no different than an individual having a basement apartment that's located off the rear of a dwelling. The hope would be, again, that individuals who are in the rear yard are there to enter the house, again, being in a residential neighborhood. I don't, again, see it much different as a basement apartment. In terms of snow removal, and maybe if we could go back to the site plan, and I will, Mr. Chair, I do believe I've come up with conditions that are enforceable through the Committee of Adjustment, that, again, if meritorious, would be able to be put into a decision. So what we see here, if we look to the south, that's actually, that's actually an easement for hydro towards the rear. So the back edge of the proposed parking area is actually a through-and-through easement, okay? But again, that could have snow storage on it, that's not an issue. Also, if we look to the west, adjacent, where we see that open space, that could also have snow storage. So in terms of snow storage, I'm not overly concerned. Now, again, to go back to the parking, there really is no parking that is required here. This backyard, rear yard, could essentially look exactly as it is today, and that could be one giant patio, right? That could be identified as a patio. What it wouldn't have would be the curb cut that comes from the street, which, again, is permitted, that takes the vehicle to the back. But in terms of the rear yard itself, that would be permitted to be a giant patio as it exists on the screen today. I'm just checking the time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I've been a little bit lax, just given that I've given the oppositions a little bit of extra time, but...
I think I can, I think I'm going to be able to get through it. I would, again, say there's no landscape variances for the front or the rear yard. I spoke of the Oreg, which permits the three units, which really trumps or supersedes, maybe not the best word to use today, maybe supersedes or has more precedent over the official plan policies. Now, if we could bring up the recommended conditions of approval, again, if meritorious, I do believe these are 100% enforceable by the Committee of Adjustment as they relate to specific things on a site plan that I've spoken with Mr. Wang about, and briefly, Mr. Zeljko this morning about. So I did email these in this morning, and this would be typical of an OLT or a TLAB hearing, something that could be enforceable as it relates to a development.
All right, why do we do this? I'm going to ask you to conclude. I do want to pull that up.
That would be it, this is my conclusion.
And if we have questions based on what's on the screen, then we can ask them at that time, but...
This would be my conclusion, would be, again, just quickly going over these recommended conditions for approval. I believe I sent it this morning.
While we're pulling that up, Mr. Bencowski, unrelated to the variances, I realize, but there's no soft landscaping requirement in the rear yard?
25%, which we are in keeping with.
Okay.
I can maybe start to speak to them, because I think if we put the site plan up, it would make sense, and if, again, meritorious, you could tie it. There they are, that's it exactly right there.
Staff, you can stop the clock at this point, we're, put this in as one of my questions.
It's okay, I've already missed my Mississauga one o'clock, so we can do this all afternoon. So some of the recommendation conditions of approval, one would be that all surface areas on the subject property are to be constructed of permeable pavers, starting at the permitted front yard setback, as identified on A0, drawing A0 dated February 27, 2025.
Yeah, we do see that, okay?
Okay, the next one would be, minimum onsite parking space dimensions to be 2.6 by 5.6 per the city design standards. The next one would be the, a maximum, sorry, a minimum and maximum driveway width on the east and west side yard to be three meters plus 0.15 meter by 0.15 meter high curb along the east, that would just be a curb, again, adjacent to Mr. Zeljko, which would aid in retaining any rainwater on the site. I'm generally not somebody that loves doing that, because that would be handled through a grading plan through the retention, but again, we did speak of this, and that, again, would also start, that's what's been identified as the permitted front yard setback on the site plan. And again, number four would be that the applicant provide, again, that same type of a curb, as it relates to the backyard separating the parking area to the hydro corridor, it's not a hydro corridor, the hydro easement towards the rear. And the last one is, applicant to replace any removed private trees, which is the one in the front yard, with one new tree planted on site. I would love to do the three to one on the site, I can't guarantee that we would be permitted to build those, sorry, to plant two trees in that easement towards, we would be happy to do that, but in my discussions with Mr. Wang, I said I cannot commit to something that I cannot follow through on, not knowing.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask if you have any questions. All right, I think we can address, yes, Mr. Anfield.
Picking up on comments that were raised by the residents, can you explain to me how garbage is going to be stored and collected? It's one issue, and secondly, do you have any proposals, and I think I know the answer because you've got no room for anything, just no, do you have any kind of screening proposals between the entrance driveway and the property to the east? Does the entrance driveway goes right to the property line, I think?
Correct.
Is there a fence, is there some kind of a screen barrier for them?
So if we could bring up the site plan, so that is, that's encaps, well, part of what you said, three, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kniffel is encapsulated in the condition of the curb, so that would create that little bit of a separation. Mr. Wang did ask for a privacy fence, I don't have an issue putting a privacy fence there, I'm not sure if that's something the committee can impose and follow through towards the building permit, so that was why, in Mr. Wang's list, he had that there, I said, I can't imagine there's not going to be a fence there, but what I would also say is essentially, the driveway next door is essentially almost at the property line also, so you're really almost touching the two driveways.
So have you discussed this with the adjacent property owner?
I have, I discussed it with Mr. Zeljko.
So are they agreeable with there being no fence?
We would put a fence, I'm just not sure if that's a condition that could be placed through the committee. I believe the curb could, because it's a physical feature that we can identify. I'm happy if committee would like to make that a condition, I just don't know if that can follow through to the building permit stage if approved through you, Mr. Chair.
I think we can discuss that, maybe.
I don't have an issue with that at all.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to caution one more time, and you said it before, much of these stem from a negotiation between neighbors and the agent, and I'm leery of the committee going forward with what essentially equates to a private agreement to settle some sort of concern. I don't, I don't see the problem with them talking to each other, which is great, nothing prevents them from signing any sort of agreement themselves to ensure work is done, whether it's legally enforceable, I'm unsure, but some of the conditions you see that were presented, especially the trees, replacing, there's no way a zoning examiner would be very difficult to enforce that before building permit is issued.
Yeah, fair enough, and I agree.
And also, sorry, one more thing, the conditions that state and show dimensions for parking spaces, I can't, I don't think you can verify what is a city standard.
Yeah, no, we couldn't, nor could we...
I don't disagree with that, that was one of Mr. Wang's big things was out with that.
And my question about garbage has to do with a concern that there not be a bulk lift stored in the back of the building, so I need to know how you're going to store garbage temporarily during the week, and then on garbage day, where does it go?
Garbage will be stored through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kniffel, there will absolutely not be a bulk garbage collection. I don't believe a truck would come down, the 2.97 meters, to get to the rear. So what would happen is the garbage will be stored at the rear. We do have some hardscaping there that would permit it to be there, and it would just be rolled out.
Where would it be stored on the...
If we look toward, if we can, can we zoom in along that rear wall where the stairs are going down to the basement? Yeah, it would be stored at... Again, towards that rear portion there, where we have the stairs going up, we have room there where it's unobstructed to be able to store it there.
Might it be helpful going forward to label that on your plan?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with that statement, Mr. Kniffel, I do believe that might help, and I think, again, part of this was my conversation with Mr. Wang, where when you don't have a site plan approval process, a lot of that would get washed out in the site, in the site plan process, and the multiplexes are, they're here, they're going to stay, but there are, there are some things that we're going to have to work through to figure out, and I believe garbage is one of them, you know, I, anyway, it's okay. I'm not going to continue.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Bencowski. Let's take this into committee for brief discussion and a motion. Who wants to start us off? Okay, Mr. Bartolo, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I know this is a long item, and I know it's one of the new items with, or a new type of item with respect to the multiplexes in pretty established residential neighborhoods. I commend the neighbors on both their physical and virtual presence and the quality of their presentation, like you guys did a good job, and we understand and your concerns, and it was put forward very well, and we appreciate the level of effort that the architect, Mr. Bencowski, and the client, and everybody's done in communicating with the neighbors and the local public. So that being said, there's a lot of items that have been discussed, and I'm going to echo the deputy chairman's words, and I don't know, I don't know that it's appropriate to enforce any of those items that have been put here before us, right? And largely speaking, what is being proposed is permitted, right? There's nothing here that is not, obviously, there are variances before us, and some of them are going to be eliminated, but the fourplex, which is going to cause an impact to your neighborhood and other neighborhoods throughout the city, this is a permitted use, and it's going to happen. Really, the main point of contention for me here is whether, whether we do 70 or 100% of the wall height. Everything else, in my opinion, is very much, very much doable or has been eliminated. And my opinion on this is, in order to accommodate these multiplexes within the city, and to provide units that are sizable within the world that we live in today, and trying to get some larger units that accommodate families and people working from home and all of these sorts of things, I'm of the opinion that what's being proposed here is reasonable, you know, well-designed, and should be approved at the 100% of the length of the wall, at 10 meters, as modified by the client, or by the proponent here today.
Mr. Bartolo, I sort of echo your comments, the one contention I had was, it was really a question of whether or not that additional 30% should be permitted to the full 10 meters is really the, you know, from the get-go. Ms. Senkar, I think I saw you raise your, no, okay, all right. Yeah, and to your point, I mean, we include things like, I mean, if there was a variance for landscaping, it would be very easy to include those permeable pavers, but I'm reluctant to, and I'm glad to see it, because initially, when I saw the amount of hardscaping, I thought, well, maybe we could get some permeable pavers out of this, but there is no variance for landscaping, so it's very hard to impose those on an agent or applicant when what their building is an as of right, I think that's... I think that's maybe a step too far for our committee.
I would tend to agree, and just because we don't impose it, doesn't mean it's not a good idea. Curbs may be a good idea, fencing may be a good idea.
No, I think the permeable pavers would be a great idea in this case, given they have some water, they might have some water issues.
We're here to rule on variances. Doesn't mean that what's been proposed can't be done. It just means it can't be imposed, right?
Yeah. Mr. Niffel, you had some to say?
I have one still, one outstanding reservation, and I, I would like to commend Mr. Binkowski on his comment about because there's no site plan, things that you would deal with in the site plan process somehow need to be accommodated here or they're lost. And I, I think that that perhaps going forward is something to bear in mind. There's, there are a lot of things that could go wrong, and there isn't a site plan process to deal with them. My concern still has to do with the, the interface between the project and the property to the east. I don't think it's appropriate to be approving a driveway of that length that leads to a parking lot of that size without any barrier between this property and the adjacent property next door. And I, I feel that the provision of fencing along that property line is something that we would require in almost all other applications where there is this level of conflict between amenity space and parking. So, that's still, that's still very much a concern for me.
I don't disagree with you. I just, I question what, how we tie that concern to some of the variances that are before us. I mean, there's no side yard setback on that side, and there's no variance for the driveway itself, right?
I understand. Down the road, if we see this again, this is a concern for me.
Yeah.
I think there is a real problem of compatibility. And the applicant has indicated that he would be agreeable to placing a fence along there. And to that extent, I would be inclined to put that in as a condition.
Okay. Might also, since you bring it up, mention that you've got two primary entrances. Essentially, entering right on the driveway creates a bit of a hazard with a blind spot. You come out that door, and there's a car backing out or going by. Yeah, but again, not before, it's, it's, you know, you try to focus on the, you got us to focus on the variances that are before us.
Yeah, but I think you need to look ahead, how is it going to function? I commend the applicant who's done a muscle eye.
Yes, yes, I agree. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Just a cautionary note. A lot of these issues that are identified now, as agreed upon, would usually be vetted through the site plan process. That process is not before you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we'd put the fence. Property line fence? All right.
Okay, because I'm voicing that is a concern for me, but a very favorable situation.
Okay. I mean, there's nothing to stop as well the immediate neighbor from constructing a fence. Usually, it's a property line fence. They have to be agreed on by both neighbors. If one neighbor doesn't agree, the other neighbor can still build a fence. It just required some form of setback, which they may, in this case, it looks like they may have. Comments? Are we ready for motion? Okay. Yes, Mr. Bartolo, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm not going to reiterate what I just said. So, I am going to put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the following revisions. And I want to make sure I get this right, is variance number two is removed. Variance number three reduced to ten meters. Variance number four is removed, and variance number five is increased to one decimal six meters.
Yeah, good revisions too, I might say, for the applicant. It's helpful.
And that concludes the motion.
Do I have a seconder? Second by Mr. Kubu. All in favor? Okay, opposed, Mr. Niffel opposed. Motion carries. Application is approved. Thank you. All right. Item number nine, four twenty-three Glen Karen Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story, single-family dwelling with integral garage variances before us. Building height, building length, depth, east and west side yard setback, number of stories, driveway width, eve encroachment into an east and west side yard setback, front yard landscaping, all side main wall height variances for front, back, and both sides. On file, material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, memo from urban forestry, form letters of support, one forty-two, two hundred, two oh seven Strathallin, number two, twenty-two West Grove Crescent, four oh seven, four twenty-nine Glen Karen, fourteen Glen Rush Boulevard, forty-two Alexandra Wood Boulevard, three sixty-seven Glen Grove Avenue, and letters of objection from four nineteen, four twenty-one, four twenty-two Glen Karen Avenue, as well as correspondence with the neighbors. We have our agent or applicant with us. While we're waiting for the agent, I should ask, is anybody here for this item in person?
Afternoon, Mr. Chair.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yes, good afternoon, your name and address, please.
My name is Lamor Benmore Mizrahi of LB Mizrahi Architect, Inc. at three twenty-one Hidden Trail, North York, Ontario. I'm the architect and agent for the proposed dwelling at four twenty-three Glen Karen Avenue.
All right, let's get the clock up. Going to ask for a presentation from you on this item.
Certainly. If I may ask the moderator to kindly share the presentation material on the screen. Four twenty-three Glen Karen Avenue is located within the established Bedford Park residential neighborhood with several two- and three-story infill developments constituting various design styles en masseing as seen on page two. Our proposal consists of a typical three-story dwelling with integral garage in the transitional Georgian architectural style. Prior to this hearing, packages were personally circulated by our clients to over sixteen of the surrounding neighbors, including an explanation of the requested variances. As mentioned, we've received ten submitted letters of support. In addition, our clients proactively engage with three of our adjacent neighbors at their request, four nineteen and four twenty-one Glen Karen Avenue to the east, and four twenty-five Glen Karen Avenue to the west. Next page, please. We are requesting a combined nine major minor variances, and given the time limit, I will focus on the key ones and some revisions made to our original submissions. Following our discussions with planning staff, the following revisions were made to better comply with planning's recommendation. First, with respect to variances two and three for building length and depth, we have reduced both the proposed building length and depth from twenty-five point eight four meters to twenty-five point five four meters as shown on the site plan in pages seven and eight. This variance is primarily a result of the single-story breakfast room extension, while the main portion of the dwelling on both floors measures twenty-two point one six meters in building length. The breakfast room extension is a single-story feature which provides minimal visual impact and does not contribute to massing concerns. Please turn to the context maps on page twelve and thirteen. Here, we see that comparable building lengths range from twenty-one point seven two meters to thirty-seven point four meters, with an average of twenty-seven meters, confirming that our proposal is consistent with past approvals and well within the established neighborhood context. Most recent approvals include one eighty-six Coldstream Avenue with similar lot size and depth, where a building length of twenty-four point eight nine meters was approved, and three eighty-eight Glen Karen Avenue where twenty-four point one four meters building length and depth were approved. As mentioned, the main portion of our dwelling on both floors is twenty-two point one six meters. Regarding variances numbers four and five concerning minimum side yard setback, where the required is one point eight, please refer to the site plan on pages seven and eight, and the second floor on page nine. The proposed east side yard setback has been revised and is now one point two meters from the property line. Furthermore, the proposed west side yard setback is zero point nine two and only occurs at the first third of the house at the front on both floors, where it is then set back to one point two meters on both floors. This is a revision to the latest plans submitted to staff in order to relieve concerns from the neighbors to the west. It should also be noted that half of the existing home is set back zero point three three meters from the property line on the west side, as seen on the site plan on page eight. In addition, the requested side yard setback variances are consistent with approvals in the area. Please refer to the context map on pages number fourteen, showing similar approvals for reference. Regarding variances numbers eight and nine, the proposed roof projection, where the eaves of a roof may encroach into a required minimum building setback and maximum zero point nine meters, this has been revised to zero point nine two meters on the east side from one point two one, and the proposed eve encroachment on the west side remains at one point one nine and only occurs for the first third of the house at the front. The rest of that side complies. Lastly, the proposed building height of eleven point two six meters is already within the range of precedent approvals in the area. Similar approvals have been granted at three seventy Glen Grove, four fifty-one Linton Boulevard, and multiple properties on Coldstream and Alexandra Wood, with heights ranging from eleven point two two meters to eleven point five four meters. As shown in the front elevation on page ten, the hipped roof design has been carefully shaped to minimize visual impact, reaching its highest point at the center and stepping down to ten point nine two meters at the sides. This design softens the overall massing and ensures the home integrates well into the streetscape. Moreover, the elevation is at its highest at the front due to the natural grading which slopes upwards towards the rear. This is clearly illustrated on the side elevation on page eleven, where the wall height is shown to be lower at the back, and the actual height from grade is ten point four nine meters at the rear. While this is height, while this height is fully supported by precedent and city's planning staff, had no objections. As a good faith effort to address neighbors' concerns, the owner has further reduced the height to eleven point one six meters. The proposed house is designed to be aligned with evolving character of the neighborhood and contextually appropriate. It complies with the lot coverage and front yard setback in the bylaw. And when considering the requested minor variances in relation to development in the area, it is our contention the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw is maintained, and the requested variances are minor in nature. I have, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the speakers may have. Thank you.
Questions? Could you just, you, you mentioned some addresses with respect to building depth. Three eighty-eight Glen Karen was one, and I think one eighty-six Coldstream, is that what I heard?
Yeah, those are just two of the latest ones that were approved. If you look at the maps, sorry, I have a cold. If you refer to the, to the maps on which pages is, I think they're pages. Thirteen, twelve and thirteen, the context maps, you'll see many, many, many variances approved in the area.
Okay, and, and in your analysis of those addresses, what did you, did you look at the number? Did you look at the site plan specifically? Yeah, I think you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, we know. We found that the comparable building lengths range from twenty-one point seven two meters to thirty-seven point four, so with an average of twenty-seven meters. And again, our main portion of our dwelling is actually twenty-two point one six, where it goes right to the end of the first story bump out, which is the breakfast room, and that accounts for the large variance in that area.
Okay, and I'm just, in terms of your review, what extent did you go? Did you look at committee approval notices? Did you look at the application itself?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so are, are you, with those two properties that you brought up, does that building length facilitate a two-story rear main wall?
Yes.
It does. So, you've looked at the applications themselves?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we have some other speakers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I'm just remote. This is Mark Franklin from four one nine Glen Karen Avenue. My house is two east of four twenty-three. Mr. Chairman and Committee, we sent in a letter with more detailed response, but I just want to speak to some things that are not in the letter. I think the people who really affected this are myself at four one nine, four two three, and four two five, because this is, we're going to see this house. And what has upset us is that we feel that most aspects of this application have been designed to mislead us and in fact, to mislead the committee. It's not what they say, it's what they don't say. We find it deceptive and designed to pull the wool over our eyes. It's one thing to compare this application to previous approvals. It is a completely different situation where the applicant bundles and requests many major variances, sum up to fifty-two percent more than what is allowed, and relies on previous committee of adjustment decisions which do not address these cumulative bundled major numerous variation requests. Let's look at some of the facts. The applicant is asking for variances that exceed what is allowed by up to fifty-one percent for an eight-on-suite bedroom, seven thousand six hundred square foot, three-story house. They quote other houses in the area where some of these variances have been allowed, but they never quote where all of them have been allowed, because this is because they really cannot find such situations. The variances they have chosen to submit do not over outline the other relevant facts from these cases, such as many of these houses are lots much larger, larger. They're on ravines, they're on corners. The size of the bump out relevant to the main house mass is completely different. And one of the biggest things is they don't list other decisions where there's been major objections. They choose decisions where there's been letters of approval but not objections. And ultimately, it's not just the length of this house which exceeds the code by fifty-one percent, it's the mass. It's the height, setbacks, third floor, and walls on the deck, which they conveniently forget to mention that they will have walls on the side of their deck to the extent of a bump out. And also, the other thing that they don't mention, they don't mention where applicants have had the committee deny their requests, like two one eight Strathasm Boulevard, which is right behind us, and a year or so ago, a third-story house was rejected. Or three sixty-four Glen Grove Avenue, where the committee rejected it. Now, possibly the biggest area of deception and misleading are the letters of approval that they bring forward. The first one is from their mother who lives two streets away, and that just sets the tone. The Hartman's House at four twenty-seven is four houses away, and another one is five houses away. Most of these letters are from two or three blocks away. It's absurd. Those houses are not affected at all by the mass of this house. And the fact that myself at four one nine, four twenty-three, and four twenty-five are going to be staring at a wall that extends into our garden seventeen feet longer than what is permitted, seventeen feet longer than our houses, and thirty-six foot high. I have done a preliminary shading study which proves that this mass is going to cause shade in my garden and on my pool. Plus, they will have a window where they can look out into our garden. Talking about the consultative process, we reached out to the architect and to the owner. The first offer, they said they'd plant a few bushes and a tree to appease us. Then they reduced the length by three feet, which was two percent. And ultimately, you have correspondence where they replied to us saying that they rejected our proposals, and they will go ahead and build a fourplex in the backyard as they are allowed to. The owner told us that as a real estate lawyer, he's done between eighty and a hundred similar applications in the last year, and that he knows his plans will be approved. Also, he said that he has provided over a billion dollars in finance to clients in the last year for similar products. Their application further misleads, saying that the existing house, which they're going to demolish, is also three stories. Correct, but the height of this existing house is lower significantly than the house they want to build.
Sir, just be mindful of the time.
Okay, great. The last thing I want to do is, one of the examples she's listed is three sixty-seven Glen Grove. This property got six letters of approval. This property got six letters of approval, no offers of objection, and the main story bulk of the house is fifty-nine feet in length. Four twenty three is seventy-three feet in length. That's thirteen foot more and they ignore the fact that the bulk of that application had a flat deck. Please don't let this become the new normal and a slippery slope for other builders to say, well, you granted it to four twenty three. Please do not let that happen.
All right, thank you. I believe we saw of a question from Ms. Sankar.
Sorry, I withdraw my question. Thank you.
All right, sorry, I saw your hand up. Uh, any questions from other members? All right. Okay, we have some other speakers.
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I am Alvin O. Souza from four twenty five Glen Karen Avenue. So I'm the immediate neighbor to the west. I didn't write a letter, but I have been extensively in discussions with two of the neighbors that, including the previous speaker. And, uh, you know, I thought I agreed with most of those things. I also spoke with the architect. When I saw this application, I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe the excessiveness of all the, the variances. So let me, uh, say one thing. I had a renovation in my house and I made an application to the committee of adjustments. And I wasn't able to receive a four-feet side yard setback that I requested. I had to go to the O M B to obtain that, uh, that side yard setback. And my house now is thirty-nine feet, okay? Because my, you know, in that particular case, I had a right or I had a reason for a variance because uh, my house wasn't centered and it was in addition to one of the sides. So my to, the total width of my house is thirty-nine feet. And with the proposal here, we're talking about a house with a width of, uh, forty-three feet, okay, so it's four feet wider. Uh, I agree with there was misinformation in the, uh, the plans that were distributed. First page just said that it was a two-story house. Uh, then there wasn't on, on the, um, uh, that back extension. It wasn't clear that that actually is gonna cover the, is gonna go across the whole width. It's not just the hard part in the middle, okay? So, uh, it said that the, the west side yard setback is one, one foot going to zero. Well, that's, that's false. It's one foot. And we heard it said by the architect that it's half of the house. Well, you know what? It's exactly fourteen feet because I measured it yesterday. And, uh, and I think the other part is actually a little bit longer. So the current house is a very shallow house that probably is not even thirty feet. And, uh, and the proposed house, the main part is seventy-two, but with the extension to the back, it becomes um, eighty-three, eighty-three feet. Uh, then there is, um, so, so this extension to the back is going to, um, uh, cause shades on my side, especially with such a, a side yard also, uh, setback variance. And, uh, it impacts my pool. Uh, typically, we go and we sit on the side of the pool on these lawn chairs. Well, we'll be very close to the, uh, that back eating area. Okay, and then from inside the house, I have a big window looking to the back. I will be looking into a very big wall, okay, in the field of view and with some impact of light coming in. Um, and, uh, so, uh, uh, just one second, uh. Okay, so there's privacy issues in the, in the back, back yard. And, uh, so I, um, I said to the architect that, look, you know, you're willing, you know, to, I'm willing to accept subvariances, even a little bit on the depth, okay? But the thing is, this is way, like, I, I thought there's no way that the committee of adjustments should approve this because I thought this is way, way out of proportion. And, uh, just this morning, I went around to look at all those houses that were listed in the material that was sent to us. And, uh, like, one of them, I couldn't even find it. It's kind of deep in a very irregular corner lot at the end of the street, backing into it, a ravine. So they're all mostly very irregular lots. And, uh, you know, and there's a single one in, in Glen Karen, Glen Karen. But again, uh, this lot is a rectangle. It's like a, you know, it's a new build. The, the house is going to be, the, the current house is going to be, um, demolished completely. So there is no reason that even regarding the side yard setback, that there should be any reference to the existing house. Okay, in terms of its, of its vocation. And furthermore, when I did my application to get my four feet, I was knocking down a carport with a setback of one and a half feet. That didn't help me to get four feet. You know, I had to go to the O M B, okay? So that argument didn't help me.
All right, final word, sir?
Okay, so I think it's important that, uh, that we don't, like the previous speaker said, we don't just go, you know, we gotta look at everything else that was rejected in the past, you know, in other areas. So thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions? Okay, all right, staff, any other speakers as well?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are trying to unmute Maritino, but I think she needs to approve the, uh, speaker phone. Next person online is Robert Levine, which is unmuted now.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and Committee. This is Robert Levine. I am at four two one Glen Karen. I am the immediate neighbor to the east. Um, I was part of the six neighbors, uh, that were on the one letter against the proposal. Uh, and we are the six immediate neighbors to this property and as another, um, neighbor mentioned, like, do not be distracted by all the family and friends and mother of the other letters of support that are not in the line of sight, that are clearly out of the sixty meter radius that should have been consulted. Uh, again, this was all kind of designed to, to mislead the committee. Um, what I do wanna point out also, and just to reiterate the comparables, um, because I am another neighbor that kind of scratched my head as to like, well, jeez, I must be missing something as to, as to why an applicant would, you know, quite frankly, waste the time of the committee with such excessive variances. But when you go around to these other comps, I would concur that they are double lots. They are, um, in some cases, homes that are, um, you know, portrait versus landscape as, as this property is. So it's very misleading as is to the comps. Um, so I, I'm not gonna, uh, harp further on that, um, because a lot has already been said. But, um, as an immediate neighbor, um, I think my, you know, my voice does carry her. So the next is on the combination of the variances. Um, you know, again, why the six of us, uh, were against the variance? It really does have to do with the combination of these variances. In particular, the length and depth variances, which, which, you know, ranged from thirty-four to forty-five percent of the allowance that they're requesting. Um, you know, these are, each one of them has a different story, but in combination, they create a massive structure that does eat into, um, in particular, uh, our backyards. This house would go seven meters or twenty-one feet past mine. Uh, and, um, and as you'll see in some of the visuals in the presentation that the, um, that the architect prepared, you can see that the backyards of these houses, which includes ones that have had recently been built um, and had requested variances. And they were minor in nature. They weren't excessive and that was not allowed. So I don't know why it would be allowed here. So this is creating a structure that is completely unlike the neighbors. Um, the, uh, the permitted length of seventeen meters, the depth of nineteen meters. You know, um, we had, uh, you know, asked the applicant or the applicant's architect to come down to nineteen meters. So we did try and offer something that, you know, again, was a variance that was not immaterial, but, you know, again, as one of the other neighbors pointed out, that just wasn't good enough. So, uh, this is an eight-bedroom, almost eight thousand square feet home. We do not understand how such a massive structure could be allowed. And then particularly from my perspective, sitting in my backyard, staring at a over thirty-foot wall that extends eleven, eleven meters or thirty-three feet past my house is, uh, just so uncharacteristic of any reasonable ask um, that, you know, that's why I'm raising this concern. Um, as it relates to the setbacks in the, the, at least the east, um, side yards, uh, eaves troughs. I mean, it's, you know, going to pour water onto literally my house. Um, and I understand that water drainage, that'll come at a later stage, but I need to register that as an issue because there's um, very little setback that's being requested. Uh, we asked the architect and the applicant if there was a sunshade study done. Uh, it wasn't done. Um, and so again, we feel that that's a big issue. Some of the recent constructions behind our houses, two eighteen and two twenty-two Strath Allenwood, um, were also, um, had, had, uh, areas that were rejected because, again, just adding them all together, the sheer size. Four nineteen Glen Karen, um, again, which is one of the more recent builds in the, in the immediate neighbors, um, you know, doesn't have this depth and it was, uh, uh, not, not accepted at committee. So I think there's more homework to be done to get transparency. Um, and even many of the pictures that are shown of homes that are similar are not even on the same block. Uh, so, um, I think with that, I'd just like to urge the committee to make sure they're taking a hard look in considering all the factors combined together and the impact on the neighboring backyards, their visibility and privacy and, um, and enjoyment of the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions? Okay. We have any other speakers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have Maritino on the next line, but, uh, she needs to accept the request to unmute.
All right.
If you can hear us, please accept.
Ms. Tino, are you with us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mary doesn't wish to speak. She says listen.
All right, very good. Any other speakers?
Mr. Chair, if there's no speakers, can I just clarify if the applicant made any changes?
Yes.
It went quite quickly.
Yeah. Uh, all right, we're gonna need a rebuttal, but before we, uh, get the timer on, uh, their response, uh, let's just get some clarification on, uh, whether or not there's any changes to the public notice.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm gonna list them all for you right now. Um, building height has been revised to eleven point one six meters.
Variance number fa, I thought you said variance one.
One.
One, thank you.
One, sorry. Variance number two.
Uh, sorry, we're gonna stop. Eleven point one six, is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, that's correct.
So I wanna make sure staff are getting this.
Uh, variance number two. The proposed building length. Is that length? Yes. The length is twenty-five point five four. Variance number three as well is twenty-five point five four. Variance number four. The east side yard setback is one point two meters. And variance number five, the west side yard setback is zero point nine two meters and is set back to one point two meters after the, um, the first third of the house.
All right, just to confirm, variance number four and five, east and west side yard setbacks, both now one point two meters?
No, the west side's aren't yet setback. It remains at zero point nine two, but that's for that small portion at the front. The rest of the house was set back one point two meters.
Okay, so the variance number five doesn't change there?
Hmm, you know, well, the first floor has also been set back. That's the change really. Um, on variance number nine, revised, uh, to zero point nine two meters. What was once one point two one meters.
All right.
Those are all the variances, yeah.
Uh, can we also just, let's, uh, one of my, uh, members asked if we can just clarify number five, please?
Sure. What was variance number five?
Your west side yard setback. I think it's, it remains, but there's, there's some changes, but the variance itself remains.
Yes, so in the revised plans that were sent to, um, staff as per their request, um, we had, um, set back the east side yard setback at one point two. And they had requested to leave zero point nine two meters across the length of the house in, um, on the west side. And what we had done was left it at zero point nine two for the first third portion and the rest of the house on that side has been, um, revised to one point two meter setback.
Okay.
So that's would be on both floors, yeah. It's really a difference from what you see on the revised plans, um, on the first floor, on the main floor. Second floor remains as is at one point two meters.
All right. We got all that? Sort of? Yeah. All right, um, let's provide our agent a chance to respond to the comments, uh, from, uh, the neighbors.
Uh huh. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, regarding concerns about overshadowing sight lines and privacy, could you please refer to pages sixteen, seventeen and eighteen on the slides? We understand our neighbors' concerns about sunlight access. However, the existing mature trees along both property lines already create significant shading as shown on these pages. Um, particularly at four twenty-one and four twenty-five Glen Karen Avenue. With all backyards facing south, any shading on adjacent properties is primarily due to existing site conditions, not our design. Furthermore, it would be impossible for our house to, home to cast shadows on four nine
Furthermore, it would be impossible for our house to, home to cast shadows on four nineteen Glen Karen, two doors to the east. Additionally, we removed the existing detached garage and incorporated an integral garage, reducing massing at the rear. And minimizing both shadows and privacy concerns for the neighbor to the east. No walls are produ- proposed on the deck as per, um, the neighbors' concerns. Uh, listed, given these factors, any incremental shading from our proposal is negligible and does not alter existing conditions. Uh, regarding building height, the objection from neighbors to refer to a denied request at two eighteen Strath Allenwood. In that case, the request for building height setback and building lengths were all approved. The only denial, denied request at the time was for a third story due to the staff's request to remove it. Our proposed roof is hipped and the height contributes to a well-articulated and thoughtful proportioned facade, rather than creating an overwhelming mass. Regarding the proposed three-story dwelling where the allowable height is two stories, uh, please refer to page fifteen. This illustrates both existing homes and previously approved variances in the area on the map. Thank you. Please also see page two showing some of the homes with three stories on the street. The proposed third story is only a partial floor and contained within the roof volume. Moreover, the existing dwelling along with its adjacent neighbor is three stories. Uh, with regard to the side yard setbacks and existing retaining wall, it is important to clarify a few points. First, as mentioned, um, earlier, we have increased the east side yard setback to one point two, providing additional space for drainage and mitigating concerns. About proximity to the, uh, adjacent home. Furthermore, any concerns about water drainage will be, um, addressed through the required law creating plan, which will be submitted as part of the building permit application. In closing, we have made every effort to engage in open and constructive dialogue with our adjacent neighbors at four nineteen, four twenty-one, and four twenty-five Glen Karen. Our clients personally met with them and at their request, we had multiple follow-up discussions, both with myself and directly with the client. Not notably, Mr. Susette, four twenty-five Glen Karen, had no issue with the third floor as his own home is three stories, as shown on slide two. While the three adjacent neighbors did provide feedback, their requests for ex- far exceeded what had been approved in the area. Making it impossible to maintain both the design integrity and proper proportions of the home. Despite our willingness to engage and make reasonable revisions, including a further reduction in building depth. There was no middle ground that met their concerns while still allowing for a functional and well-designed home. It is disappointing that throughout this process, Mark Franklin and Robert Levine have actively proposed, opposed this, uh, application. Following a pattern seen with other proposals in the area. While we respect the right to voice concerns, their approach has gone beyond constructive feedback, including misinformation. The incorrect so, uh, circulation of my client's address and unfounded assumptions about personal affiliations from letters of support.
Uh, I just remind you, I'm just gonna remind you, please keep your comments specific to the, uh, the application itself. We don't need to get into, uh, neighborhood.
No, I understand, but there were particularly, through you, Mr. Chair, they were particularly aggressive, uh, and I wanted to point that out. Um, a lot of this was misinformation. Ultimately, opposition alone does not equate to undue impact and requesting extreme revisions beyond what has been approved in the area is not a valid basis for refusal. Throughout this process, we have made several revisions to address neighbor concerns, including reducing the building setbacks, building length, depth, and height. Demonstrating a willingness to find a re- reasonable balance. Um, the variants before you are reasonable, supported by precedent, planning staff, and neighbors. And have been thoughtfully designed to ensure compatibility with the surrounding context. We respectfully request the committee approve this application subject to the conditions of planning staff and urban forestry. Thank you.
All right, questions? All right, since there's no questions, we're gonna take this matter into committee. Anyone like to get us started off? I have a few comments, but I, I rarely like to start unless. All right, I'll get us started. Um, of all the variances, I think my biggest, uh, the biggest challenge, uh, for me, uh, was the length and depth on this one. Um, particularly the relationship that it has in the immediate context. Uh, there's a pretty, uh, apparent rear main wall delineation, uh, between adjacent properties. And I think that this, uh, takes, uh, the depth and the length kinda takes it, uh, a little bit beyond what I think is, uh, acceptable. Um, I, I am a little bit concerned with some misinformation in this file, uh, and I, I'd just like to address that. Um, I actually sat on the committee last year for one eighty-six Coldstream and three eighty-eight Glen Karen, so I was actually part of that approval. Um, the building depths that were provided. Twenty-four point one two meters, uh, twenty-four point nine eight meters, I mean, the similar numbers. Uh, sort of the low to mid twenties. They facilitated a one-story addition on the back. I asked the applicant, uh, whether or not that the examples that were given were simply a, a quantitative number. Uh, comparison, or whether that she had done, uh, a qualitative analysis of the site plan to determine whether or not those variances. Uh, facilitated a two-story main wall. She, uh, said yes when I asked her that, uh, that's not the case. Uh, both of those properties, uh, facilitated a single-story addition at those building depths. Um, and the, uh, two-story section, uh, of both of those houses was under twenty meters. Uh, in and around the nineteen point something range. Uh, so, um, I, I take concern with that a little bit. Uh, you know, we rely on information that's being, uh, given to us by applicants, a lot of times it comes fast. I just happen to, uh, recall both of those properties, uh, and had access to the site plans. Uh, which I, I keep, you know, my notes, uh, on, on past approvals. Uh, so I, I, I'm a little con- bit concerned with that. Maybe I'll leave it there, there, there's a lot of variances, uh, in this application. I'm, I'm, I'm frankly, I'm a little bit concerned with the cumulative effect, uh, that's, that, that it has on, on simply the number of them. Uh, but certainly the length and depth, um, are of kind of great concern to me. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I share your concern about length and depth. Uh, nothing that I heard from the applicant convinced me that this length and depth was, um, contextually appropriate. Uh, it's considerably, this proposal is considerably deeper than either of the two neighbors and of the, um, immediate homes in the area. I think that the, uh, information that was provided to us by the, particularly the two neighboring properties was very helpful. In underscoring what impact this would have on, um, the continued enjoyment of their amenity space. Um, I, I have very serious concerns with the, the length and depth of the building. There are other issues that are of much minor concern be- because I think, uh, this particular issue is so substantial. In terms of the impact of the property, of the proposal on the neighborhood, so, uh, yeah, I re- I retain a, a very, very severe. Um, concern for the length and depth.
Ti- typically, when we have length and depth variances, uh, magnitude above twenty meters, there's some sort of mitigating factor, whether it's a. Reduction in the number of stories, an increase to the side yard setback.
Or it's the basement.
Or it's the basement or an open terrace.
Basement, and it doesn't extend up.
And the, and the bylaw actually provides, uh, in, in many cases, uh, an extension of the as a right building depth. Uh, but limited to perhaps a single-story addition, as I, I think was the case, uh, with those previous approvals, uh, that the applicant brought up. Um, I don't know if there's any other comments, uh, at this time, or? Yes, Mr. Kubu?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I would like to echo your, you, your concerns about, about land, the, the, the building. And as well, uh, in the pre- let's say I would take the, the previous matter, I, I, I commented. The, the, the capacity of the applicant to, uh, to work with the neighbors. I'm quite concerned that the, this applicant, um, is instead gaslighting the neighbors. In the of working with them to get something, uh, more a- acceptable or wish meet the, 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 the four test. I'm quite not convinced that this application based on the land of these buildings really meets the four test. So I will most likely not support a, um, a, a motion to, to approve it.
Any other comments? If not, perhaps we have a motion. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I would like to move that the application, uh, be denied. I, I cannot support the, um, the depth and length that's been proposed here. I think it creates a proposal that is contextually inappropriate and inconsistent.
All right, do I have a seconder? Second by Mr. Kubu, uh, all in favor? Yes, thank you, all right, that is unanimous, uh, the application is refused. How are we doing on, uh, we have three items, two items left, are we okay to push through to, we're, I know we're behind on schedule, can we push through on those? Staff, we're okay? All right, let's keep going. Item number ten, one eighteen Three Valleys Drive. The purpose of the application is to construct a front addition to the existing attached garage. We have four variances, west side yard setback, lot coverage, front yard setback.
Number ten was, uh.
Oh, Ms. Sankar, I appreciate, thank you for, yeah, I, I didn't knew that sounded familiar. Okay, apologize. Yes, just for clarification, uh, item number ten was deferred, okay. Item number eleven, uh, ninety-eight Charles Wood Drive. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story dwelling with a rear deck. We have a number of variances, including west side yard setback for a deck, rear yard setback for a deck, lot coverage, rear platform encroachment. Chimney width, height of first floor above grade, driveway width, and east and west side yard setbacks. On file material from the applicant and a report from community planning. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Swan?
Yes, hi.
Hi, your, your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Michael Swan, I am the agent for the owner, and I reside at one oh four Seaton Drive in Aurora.
All right, thank you, uh, just give me a moment here. I'm gonna ask my colleagues, uh, whether they require full presentation or have questions. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Um, not a presentation, I'd just like to know if the applicant has seen the planning report. Because it recommends elimination of one, two, three, four, six variances.
Yeah. We'll go, uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
In which case.
I, I can respond to that.
All right, yes, please.
Yes, um, I, uh, know about the report. And it was, uh, as of yesterday afternoon, the drawings have been revised substantially. So that actually, uh, seven of the nine items have been removed and are in compliance with the zoning bylaw. The only items that are left, uh, on the, um, application are for side yard setbacks and coverage.
Okay, can we get those modifications? Uh, give us just, uh, let's pull up the public notice, because, uh, staff are also taking note. Uh, so with the exception of two variances, everything's been eliminated, perhaps just give us the two variances that, uh, we're looking at today. And those modifications.
Uh, the, the, um, item, uh, three of the examiner's notice regarding, uh.
Sir, Mr. Chair, you can't speak to examiner notice, he's gotta go with the public notice, and he's gotta start by identifying the variance number, whether it's deleted or modified.
Yeah, let's, let's work from the public notice, so we're all looking at the same document.
All right, well, I'm gonna have to, uh, zoom in so I can see the public.
Of course, and, uh, staff have it up on the screen as well, uh, be able to help you out. I think you mentioned lot coverage, which is variance number three?
Right. So, so the item one of the notice is regarding, uh. Rear yard and for the deck, that has been eliminated.
Okay.
Number two, required rear yard setback has been eliminated.
Okay.
Item three is an item to be discussed.
What's the change? Do you have a number for us?
Yes, I do, I have an exact number.
Oh, please give.
Although the, although the planning report supports thirty-eight point zero seven. The owner is respectfully requesting thirty-nine point nine percent.
Okay, so being modified to thirty-nine point nine percent, all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, item four, platform without main walls is being eliminated. Uh, item five regarding chimney breast is being eliminated. Item six, that is being eliminated. Uh, the driveway, uh, for number seven is being eliminated. And the item eight regarding soft landscaping at front is being eliminated. And, uh. Item nine is, uh, is being modified. To, I, I apologize, item nine remains the same. Item ten has been modified to be one point six three meters rather than one point two five meters.
Sorry, just, you said one point three six?
No, one point six three.
One point six three.
Yes, for item ten, the west.
Okay, so we have, uh, before us three variances today, lot coverage and two side yard setback variances.
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, I should ask, um, have you, uh, been able to submit revised, uh, drawings or site plan? To reflect changes?
A, a, a package of revised plans was submitted yesterday.
Fantastic.
Late in the day, but, uh, they show the statistics that bear out that, uh, the rear yard has full compliance. The front yard has full compliance, the driveway is complies, the chimney breast complies, or the chimney breast was actually removed. And, um, so. Uh, just the three items that are reflected in the revised plan submitted yesterday.
Okay. Uh, and I am gonna ask, um, with respect to the deviation from what was discussed with, uh, community planning, uh, concerning the lot coverage. Perhaps you can just, uh, explain, uh, what that, what, what that deviation is all about?
Well, the, the, the thirty-eight point zero seven meters square, uh, sorry, percentage. Uh, was the maximum that has been granted by the committee of adjustment within this neighborhood. The neighborhood is everything within five hundred meters of, uh, ninety-eight Charles Feet West. Uh, the owners, uh, have been looking around the neighborhood and they prefer to have a two-story house rather than a three-story house. And since this area relies on coverage rather than gross floor area, they needed to push it out a little bit more. But they felt that the, uh, two-story house would provide them with something that's not a big box. It, it's more in keeping with the rest of the, the street and the neighborhood.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
That's why they are asking the extra damage.
All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna ask.
Mr. Chair, sorry, we, we don't seem to have the revised plans, could the applicant verify when and who he sent it to?
Yes, they were sent yesterday at four o'clock to Jenny, uh, Knowles, I think her name is. The, the, the technician that's reviewing this or taking care of this file. I believe, I, I thought I saw it on the screen when, when, uh, I was talking to you. It, yes, it is on the screen right now, oh, sorry, this is. Oh, sorry, this is, these are dated February the twenty-seventh, these are not the most recent drawings, but they, they were, uh, she said that they were identified as a late submission. Whatever that might be. Hello?
Oh, just give us a moment, yeah, we're just, just taking a look here.
The PowerPoint and the, the drawings were submitted yesterday approximately four o'clock.
Okay.
And I got an email from her saying that they were attached.
I'm not even sure we need revised plans. No.
Well, they are there. Because the PowerPoint was there and it was in the same email.
The extra percent? No. There's no bump outs or anything. Okay, um, I gotta ask my members whether or not they have any questions. Mr. Niffel?
Just one, uh, have you had any discussions at all with the planning department about your proposal for, um, for coverage, which is different than what they'd suggested? I think you're recommending thirty-nine point nine percent, and they'd recommended thirty-eight point seven, point zero seven percent, there's not a big difference. But has there been any discussion on that with planning?
Uh, no, I have not had a discussion regarding that. But, um, I, I am aware of, uh, a regulation, uh, an Oreg four-six-two dash twenty-four that allows a maximum lot coverage of up to forty-five percent. So, an extra, um, one point nine percent is quite small compared to the, what, what would be allowed under this regulation. Um, you know, th- this is an evolving neighborhood, and, and it, and if this, this house was looked at, the gross floor area, it would be considerably smaller than many of the other houses on the street, because it's only two stories versus three stories.
Is that helpful? Okay. All right, sir, um, I don't think we have any other questions, uh, we're prepared to, oh, uh, Ms. Peralta? Ms. Senkar Peralta?
No, I was, I was just ready for a motion, Mr. Chair, if that was okay with everyone.
Oh, of course, um, all right, uh, sir, I, I, it looks like we're ready to move into committee for a decision for you, um, if there's anything else, unless there's anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, nothing at this time, other than thank you for hearing me, and, uh, um, I, I know it's been a long morning.
All right, thank you. All right, let's take this into committee, uh, Ms. Senkar.
Yeah, if there's no other comments on this one, I think that, uh, the applicant has, uh, gone through, um, much effort to ensure that they're trying to meet the staff's report. I know it hasn't been met fully, but I'm acceptable of, um, the near changes that he's made to, uh, variance number three. So I'll put forward a motion to approve this application with the changes made by the applicant, uh, here today, such that, um, variances number one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight have been eliminated. And variance number three is now at thirty-nine point nine percent. And variance number ten has been increased to one point six three meters, which I all be, I believe it's all minor. So that's my motion.
All right, do I have a second by Mr. Niffel? All in favor? That is unanimous, motion carries, application is approved, sir. All right, last item of the morning. Uh, item number twelve, ten Sifton Court. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with a second suite. Number of variances, including front yard setback, rear deck height and projection, variances for all main wall heights, building length, stair width in relation to encroachment into a setback, front yard landscaping, rear yard setback for a swimming pool, and side yard setback. On file material from the applicant, report from community planning, a memo from urban forestry, and one letter of objection. Uh, no name on the letter of objection. Okay, we have our agent with us, welcome back, sirs.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Arzang Behesh from Homeland at forty-nine White Cliff Crescent.
All right, just give us a moment here. All right, we do have another speaker, uh, here, perhaps individual that wrote the letter of objection, I imagine, and they're here to speak in person. All right, so gonna, I'm gonna ask for a full presentation from you. We'll get the five minutes up on the screen, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair. If I could please ask committee staff to display slide number one of, uh, our presentation package. Uh, I'll actually start with, uh, describing two of the variances, the, both the front yard setback and exterior side yard setback variance. If I could see slide number one, please. Um, it, just before slide number two, slide number one. Uh, so both of these variances are actually triggered by a very, very unusual and extreme curve at the corner of our property. This is a corner lot, uh, property. Now, the majority, vast majority, I could say, of corner properties are rectangularly shaped, are straight at the corner. And some of them, uh, have a curve, they have a curved shaped corner. Now, all of the properties, corner properties we have seen, which have a curved at the corner, have a radius of that curve of twenty feet. In this particular case, we have a radius of the curve at our corner of sixty feet. So three times that of the regular, uh, size of a regularly cor, a curved corner shaped property, which is itself a rare case of a regular rectangular shaped corner property. And then, to make the matter worse, this is also a reversed corner property. So that means that the exterior side yard setback, uh, as opposed to a regular corner property, which would be one point eight meters, now we have a three meter requirement for the exterior side yard setback. So these extreme circumstances are piling on top of each other to cause the corner of our building to surpass both the front yard setback and exterior side yard setback. Now, if I could, i- if you could please zoom into that slide, and if I could, uh, take your attention to the, uh, bottom, the no, the southwest portion of the building, we see that, uh, in our proposed building footprint, that portion juts out slightly. And actually, that portion at the very bottom, uh, complies with the required, uh, exterior side, side yard setback requirement. And then, the building actually goes in further, and we can see from the dashed, uh, line in black, not the one in red, but the one, the smaller line in black, that there is actually more room, uh, from the side, exterior side yard setback requirement and what we are proposing. So we are, uh, making the situation better in a lot of the cases from that side. The same scenario can be seen from the front, at the northeast portion. You can see that a portion of the required front yard setback is actually, uh, improved upon. And the only, only parts of the building which exceed the front yard setback requirement and a side yard setback requirement are the very, very corner of our, of our, uh, proposed building footprint. Which, again, this is all because of that extreme curvature at the corner of our property, which is three times the regular, uh, curvature of a normal curved, uh, uh, corner property. So, i- i- the, the area I've highlighted in green, which is the continuation of our slanted front lot line, I, I haven't made the situation better by making a perpendicular front lot line to our side lot line. So if we have the continuation of the slanted, uh, front lot line and the continuation of our side lot line, we can see that that green area, if it was part of our, uh, building lot, both of those variances, the front yard setback and exterior side yard setback variance, would go away. And, uh, that area in green is not the limit to the green space that is there in our lot. Because this is a corner lot, up to the area of the concrete curb, we have a green space, ample green space. So that line technically is just imaginary. And, uh, regarding the front yard setback issue, actually, Mr. Chair, um, the front yard setback of all general properties a few years ago used to be seven and a half meters. And then it was actually changed to define the average of the two side neighbors. So the intent of the front yard setback of the zoning bylaw is to keep the front of the buildings more or less in line with one another. And you can see that our only side neighbor, the one to the north, our only adjacent neighbor, uh, our building is actually pushed further back from that, uh, front, uh, wall of that neighbor. That front wall, you can see, uh, the continuation of the dashed line in red. We are much more further back from that neighbor. So all of these points considered, we can see that those two variances are actually minor in nature. If I can see slide number two. Uh, the, the zoning examiner in this particular case, uh, for the first time that I've seen, was given to somebody in the city, uh, the district of Etobicoke. Now, naturally, uh, in a different district, the interpretations are gonna be slightly different. Uh, so in this case, regarding the size, the height of the deck, the height of the deck, the zoning examiner interpreted, interpreted, took the height at the, from the walkout area directly underneath the deck. Now, it's important to note that that walkout area doesn't project further past than what the deck is. The deck completely covers that walkout area. That's why we can see, uh, minor variance written as three point, uh, something meters high, uh, as opposed to the actual height of the deck, which can be seen from the grade, the finished grade, which is, uh, highlighted in green, uh, which is o- only around one point five meters high. Uh, i- if I could see the next slide, slide number three.
Just be mindful of your time, sir.
I'm gonna wrap it up then, uh, if I could see slide number four. I would just like to mention that we, uh, a- approached all of the neighbors, uh, highlighted in blue, because we thought that those were the surrounding neighbors, the most immediately adjacent to our proposal. And we either didn't hear back from them, or we verbally spoke to them and they didn't have any concerns. We knocked on the doors, dropped letters. And finally, if I can see slide number five. Uh, the last variance is in regards to the increase in, uh, step widths, which is just two steps. We've given the main entrance of this house from that exterior side. And just those two steps, which are actually blended into the landscaping, are the ones that surpassed the limit of the bylaw. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Questions? Okay. We have another speaker in person. Welcome, please come down. Tell us your name and address, please.
Okay, I'm Mary Barber from twenty-four Sifton Court. Okay. I'm Mary Barber from twenty-four Sifton Court.
Yes.
And, um, my, um, I sent my documentation to Sam, so I'm the one that has the document there that's not signed, because this is all brand new to me to do this kind of thing.
Oh, that's okay, I, we just wanted to make sure that the, we acknowledged that we did receive the letter.
Okay, good, because it was kind of quick in how I had to do this. Um, in our neighborhood, we have a, a little small court, this is the fifth house to be built. Three of the houses previously had no variances. Um, one house did have a variance to make it wider than the bylaw by about a third of a meter. So that was approved, and all the neighbors were happy with what happened. When I looked at this, I went, wow, nine variances, let me have a look and see, this seems like a lot. What my concern is, this street is on a slope, and we get a lot of runoff, and we have a green space and a park behind us. About a year, year and a half ago, the city and the federal government spent twenty-two million dollars to fix the green space behind the houses across the street. We had a lot of erosion from water runoff, um, trees were lost, fences were lost. And my concern with this house is how much land space it's going to take. We're going to end up having sort of a single driveway, a double driveway. We're going to have, um, uh, the size of the home is the largest one that's gonna be built on the street, which is gonna take up grass space. Where's the rain going to go? Um, the swimming pool, in our neighborhood, when we've had big rainstorms, we've actually had swimming pools overflow and go onto neighbors' lawns. We just had the big spring, rain last summer, and this renovation for the ravine was done due to the rainstorm in twenty thirteen. So, I'm concerned that the pool's too close to the neighbors, the land slopes. Who's going to get wet when we have a pool overflow? Um, also, the exterior stairs, much wider than they should be, again, taking away green space. My concern being at the end of the court, where we have a lot of runoff, a lot of rain, um, that we're going to have problems with having such a huge home on such a small lot. Um, I've looked at the, um, with other neighbors, we've talked, um, many of us are not happy about this. We've agreed to the other homes on the street that were built within the requirements of the bylaw. We have a great neighborhood, we have great, um, conversations. We're just very concerned that this home is going to cause water problems for us on the street, because there's not gonna be enough land to absorb the moisture as it slopes down and runs into the green space. And obviously, it's a big issue in our neighborhood if the government spent twenty-two million dollars to fix the properties just across the street. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions? All right, no questions?
No questions? Okay, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
All right, Les McKenzie, I'm at eighteen Sifton Court, so four ho- homes down from this. Um, I didn't send in a, a, a letter, again, just, uh, didn't know the process that well anyways. Uh, just a couple things, and actually, the very first thing was saying, I've sat here for four hours, and the least I, what may, actually made me feel better is that this isn't as bad as some of the other ones I've heard, so, I'll take that into consideration. Um, moving back to sort of expla, just when I heard the, um, the architect described going on the corner, and he says he was referring to a, um, sort of a square corner, I think that's totally irrelevant, because a square corner is cars stop. Cars don't stop on this curve, right? In fact, I walk up and down that curve, there's no sidewalks there either, right? So you have to walk on the road. And so you, I actually have to, when I walk around, I have to walk on the right-hand side when I'm walking down, so cars can see me coming from behind, and then I have to walk, go across the street and walk forward, so cars coming towards me, you see, once they get around the curve, right? And what, they have a big fence there now, and it looks like they're gonna extend it out, I don't know what, it's more or not, right? But again, it's, it's not a very, I, I can't say it's not safe. It's just not comfortable walking down there, and having a huge house on that, uh, lot would sort of, not make it easier for me, right? But that's just a personal comment, right? Um, yeah, a question I have here is, and I'm just doing this visually based on the lot lines. My understanding is that there's a lot coverage of thirty percent? And this looks a lot larger than thirty percent, but that should be the way I'm reading the document, right? I see the, the black lines going up and around the circle, right? And it looks like it doesn't include up the city property going around, so. If it's over thirty percent, then I think it's just way, way over thirty percent. And, and swimming pool. I think the reason, there must be a reason why the bylaw says it has to be three meters back, and it's only like half that. It must mean that there, there is a danger of impacting the neighbors. Now, I'm not that neighbor, so I'm not gonna be impacted, but it still doesn't seem right to me they have a bylaw that they don't, they want to sort of ignore. So, I guess those are my comments, so, is there any questions?
Yeah, of course, uh, questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have another speaker? I should ask, are you from the same address? Just be mindful, I know you, you didn't take the full five minutes, but, uh, please just be mindful of the, the clock. We typically allow five minutes per household.
Okay, absolutely.
Your name?
My name's Dennis, my name's Dennis Rublond, I'm twenty-four Sifton Court.
Yep.
Um, my concern is, um, the size of this house on this property. It's a corner lot, it's a bungalow that's there now, it's a single car garage. It's gonna go to some, like, I would estimate approximately seventeen hundred square feet, maybe? It's gonna go to like forty-nine hundred, I believe. So the car, ground coverage for the water runoff, the downpipes, all that kind of stuff, is gonna be significantly different. Also, the driveway is gonna go on the other, on the east end of the property, now it's on the west end. Where that driveway is, there's a drain, the driveway's gonna be below the drain, so that's not gonna have, have any waters, water's still gonna run down the driveway, all go down to the end of the street. There's a fire hydrant there, plus there's a big tree right there, where that, uh, uh, driveway's gonna go. And secondly, on that bend, like this gentleman was saying, there's like sixty meters, whatever he said, that bend, if there's cars parked there.
if there's cars parked there, if they're only going to have a little driveway, I've seen it before when that house is an Airbnb, cars are parked there in the corner. You could, you could hardly drive around the corner. If a fire truck or an ambulance came down around there, they'd know where to get through there. Those cars are parked there. So, that is my main concern, that the runoff and the distance is not going to be sufficient, significant. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Questions? Yes, Mr. Kibou.
Yes, no, never mind, sir.
Yeah.
The applicant's agent said earlier that they tried to connect with the neighbors.
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
The applicant's agent said earlier that they tried to connect with the neighbors. Were you able to speak with them at any point? Were you able to connect with the applicant's?
No, I didn't speak to them, no, I spoke to the gentleman here just briefly today.
Just today?
Yes, sir.
And so, was there, were there any steps that they took to connect with you?
No, I just spoke to him briefly here, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's turn it back to the agent.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have another person online.
Hold that, thank you, Steph.
We're sending requests to Met-Hed El Malah, and please accept the request.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, this person sent a late objection letter. If you want, you can put it on the screen.
Can I ask, when was it sent?
Uh, late.
Okay. We can put it up on the screen, but just we'd be mindful, we can only, we take it with a grain of salt, because. All right. Turn it back to the agent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could see slide number four, actually to one of the panel members' points, if we had spoken with the, the neighbors or not. If I could see slide number four of my presentation package. I reiterate that we have, we approached all of those neighbors highlighted in blue. And the, the neighbors who are here now in our position are not one of those neighbors highlighted in those houses. They're actually further away. But we can see, you, you can see that the end of the street, Sifton Court, it's cut off, but the, the street, that's actually the end of it. I have personally lived in the area of Baby Village for over 16 years now. I take walks always in, in those streets. And actually, that street, Sifton Court, is one of the few very, very small, shallow courts with only like 10 or 15 houses for that entire court. So, it's a extremely quiet, not busy, only the residents of that area go there with car, the points that were made to cars parking on the street in terms of the corner. The other points that were brought up in terms of the water runoff, the only variances I can see which speak to a runoff of water would be a green soft yard setback variance, which we don't include here. Despite our corner lot being taken away, eaten up, our, our property of green space, we don't have a problem with the green area. The second variance, which I, I could say that would affect water runoff in terms of its footprint, would be the lot coverage, a variance which we don't have. A minor variance for lot coverage is very, very common in this neighborhood, and we don't have one here in this case. The, the stages of getting the building permit include a grading plan, which has in addition to it ways to get rid of all the water runoff in, in terms of the property in and of itself. The, in regards to the swimming pool that was mentioned, if I could see slide number six. The, the rear yard setback requirement for the swimming pool, the swimming pool itself, the variance numerically is, is minor. But if we can just zoom in a little bit, that pink stripe at the rear of the property signifies the required rear yard setback of the swimming pool. And the portion of the swimming pool, which actually surpasses that requirement, is the tiny, tiny stripe you can see at the very edge of the swimming pool. So, a, a, a super insignificant portion of that swimming pool actually surpasses the requirement of the bylaw. And then, the house itself, this is a reverse corner lot, which faces the side of our rear neighbor. So, if I could see the next slide, slide number seven. The, the portion of that pool, which passes the requirement of the bylaw, faces our, the side of our rear yard neighbor, with no windows, with only one single door to, leading to the basement of that house. So, I think that the impact really is very insignificant. That's all I can say, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Oh, my apologies, my apologies. In regards to the planning staff report, I actually forgot to make a reduction in the overall landscaping, which, if I could please do that. The required landscaping, we would like to reduce it to 57%, please. And that's for the overall landscaping, that's not for the soft yard landscaping. There's no soft yard landscaping shortage in this project.
Uh, that's variance number seven.
Variance number seven, yes. Fifty, fifty-seven percent.
Yeah, I think you meant to say increase, is it improvement?
It's making the situation better. Yes, it's not.
I think he meant to say increased, not decreased.
Fifty-seven.
Uh, and just a point of clarification, is it my understanding then that the part of the reason for that shortfall on the landscaping has to do with the, that encroachment of that corner?
Exactly.
Of the house?
Exactly, Mr. Chairman. The denominator, the, the factor that's taken as the whole is, is reduced because of that corner. And we've made all the efforts we could to still reduce that landscaping percentage, because the, the portions of landscaping which are taken away are the driveway and the porch. The porch is situated on the side, there is no porch on the front. And the driveway itself, which could be as wide as six meters as per the requirements of transportation, is five point forty-seven.
Five and a half.
Five and a half meters only.
Have you spoken with your client with the possibility of the use of permeable pavers for the driveway?
We can definitely do that, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay. I, you know, one, one of the unique things about this property is there is a bit of an elevation change to it, which I, I think in, in part kind of supports the way that it's designed and the massing. You have a three-story section that's kind of sloped up to a two-story section on the, on the side. Or in this case, the front of the, the building.
Which is why we placed the driveway on that side. We changed it from the side to the front, because it's in a much lower elevation.
Yes, yeah, so, I, I, but I do, I mean, I do acknowledge some of the concern with respect to runoff. You have a neighborhood that does have different elevation heights. It is more susceptible to flash flooding, particularly where there's a reduction in soft landscaping and landscaping in, in some cases.
In my.
Yes, sorry.
In my opinion, Chair, if we, actually what we're doing now, moving the driveway from the upper level to the lower level, that means that the water runoff that comes will be absorbed more at the higher level, because the higher level is now green space, instead of the usual driveway which it now has.
Yeah, fair enough, okay. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Kibou. All right, before we do that, I have to say thank you to our agents, as well as people that have come down today. Let's take this matter into committee now for a brief discussion and motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Before you do a motion, though, just be mindful, we have some other members that may have some comments.
So, I will let word for comments then.
All right, Ms. Sankar, some comment? Yes?
No, my, I, I just wanted to get to a motion. I, I think that this, my comment would be that I just believe that this has to do with the shape of the lot. And I think that while I respect all that the neighbors have brought forward, I think that the agent clearly demonstrates that this meets the forecast, so I'm okay with it.
All right. I might ask, would you be, if you were to bring a motion, perhaps a consideration of permeable pavers for that driveway?
Permeable pavers, as well as, yeah, him meeting the staff report, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I acknowledge what the applicant has kind of put forth in his, you know, planning rationale. You know, to the neighbor's point, it is, it looks like the driveway has enlarged a little bit. And there is a, there is a slight reduction in the landscaping. So, I, I think that helps to certainly offset, which I understand is the main concern from neighbors is, is has to do with water runoff and drainage. So, that, that, that seems to be a good sort of solution to address those concerns. But I won't speak any longer, please, if you have a motion, let's bring it forward.
I just want to respectfully give Mr. Kibou a chance. I thought he brought his hand up for something similar, so I'll give him a chance.
I think he just wanted to bring a motion, so I'll let you, I'll let, he, he, he said he's going to defer to, to you bringing the motion.
All right, sure. I think what we have here is a combination of just the, the lot being in a regular shape and them sensitively trying in whatever way possible to accommodate this. And the fact that they went out of their way also to accommodate, you know, the staff report and to address a lot of what the neighbors are saying, for which, in any case, once inspected by, you know, building, I mean, all of these sort of drainage and considerations will be monitored through that process and that phase as well. So, I'm going to put forward a motion to approve this application and make it subject to the change made by the agent here today in that variance number seven is increased to 57% of the front yard landscaping. I'm going to make it subject to the community planning staff recommendation that the proposal be developed, like in accordance with the site plan that was submitted and dated for February 13th, 2025, as well as the proposal be developed in accordance with the sidewall heights as shown on the east, southwest, and north elevations that were dated November 12th, 2024. That was, that came with, as attachments to this file. And I'm just double checking, there is forestry conditions one and two. And I'd like to thank all the neighbors for coming out and saying that, but that's my, my motion for now, thank you.
Ms. Sankar, I apologize, did you, do we include the permeable pavers with that as well?
Oh, the permeable pavers for the driveway as suggested by you, Mr. Chair, I am in agreement, thank you.
All right, and just before. Mr. Niffel, you've got.
Okay, I wanted to add, suggest a friendly amendment.
Please do so.
Ms. Sankar, is it okay, Mr. Niffel has a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Put forward to you?
Do you remember early on, the applicant indicated that the interpretation of the height of the rear deck was a surprise to him? And he clarified on his, I think, west elevation, what was intended. In, in, to safeguard against interpreting that variance and allowing a deck that's much higher, which is a possibility, I believe, I would like to suggest a friendly amendment that variance two be developed in accordance with that particular elevation. Do you remember he mentioned that the one, the one examiner took the depth to be from grade up to the deck, and the other examiner took it from the lower grade up to the deck? If we just leave the words there, I think we're inviting someone in, in future to put that deck much higher than it is intended. So, I would suggest that variance number two be tied to the elevation drawing.
Substantially in accordance with?
Yeah. I had it on his presentation, it's his west elevation.
That's the rear elevation.
The rear elevation, it's the west elevation?
West elevation.
And, and on his presentation, he shows the problem, I.
He does, yeah, he, he explains it quite, quite well.
Okay, I will accept that, variance number two be tied to the west elevation drawing, as well.
Substantially in accordance with, if that's all right, Ms. Sankar?
Substantially in accordance with, yes.
All right, thank you for getting that motion out. Do I have a second, or perhaps Mr. Niffel? Yes, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. The application, as modified, is approved with condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, thank you, panel, thank you to the staff.
All right. All right, that concludes the morning session. The time is now 3:12 PM. Are we okay to start up at four, or do we need a full hour? We're okay? Okay, we are a little behind, so we're going to take a shortened lunch break. We will resume our two o'clock session at 4:00 PM. I will try to move through our afternoon items as quickly as possible. Because we have a lot of people waiting, I'm sure. We will start at 2:00 PM with a deferral request that we have, followed by item 13 for 23 Beachwood Avenue. All right, we'll see everybody at four o'clock.